People are often unreasonable, illogical, and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are successful, you will win some false friends and some true enemies. Succeed anyway. If you are honest and frank, people may cheat you. Be honest and frank anyway. What you spend years building, someone could destroy overnight. Build anyway. If you find serenity and happiness, they may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today, people will often forget tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may not be enough. Give the world the best you've got anyway. In the final analysis, it is between you and God. It was never between you and them, anyway. Amen.
Thank you, and I would like to ask you to still stand, please. We have Ms. Heather Miller and Angela Crane, two Grade 11 West Lane students who are going to perform the National Anthem. Would you come forward, please? They'll be playing their floats, and they'd ask us to join in singing the National Anthem as they play. Ladies, come to the podium, please, if you would. Welcome. And thank you again for taking the time, both Heather and Angela. Heather and Angela, thank you very much on behalf of members of council for joining us this evening to play the anthem. Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening, members of council, is disclosure of any pecuniary interest. Counselor Carrion.
Your worship, may I disclose a pecuniary interest on the presentation by Bernadette Seko. I'm not sure what she's asking of the council, but I have a property next to the property that I think she's talking about, so I'm going to disclose it.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I have also, I believe, a similar conflict with respect to the same matter. I don't know what the presentation is. I do work with a property adjacent, not directly adjacent, but in the same general area. And one of the proponents also owns half of the property that I believe is being discussed. So I am going to declare a conflict at this time because I don't know what the presentation is, and preserve the right. If it doesn't deal with the property that I am involved in, then declaring a conflict, I'll deal with that later. And I don't know whether this, when we talk about historical things, whether it includes the rental property, or whether this is just in one particular area there. So I will declare that conflict at this point.
So noted. Are there any other disclosures of pecuniary interest? Okay, having seen none, we'll proceed on. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the council minutes of April 11, 2007, please, moved by Counselor Mays, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion for those? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Also, a motion to approve the council minutes of April 16, 2007, moved by Counselor Carrion, seconded by Counselor Mays. Any discussion? Having seen none, no discussion, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. This evening, we have some dedications. The first will be from Niagara Falls Girls Soccer. Joining us this evening is Mr. Dan Santin and Mr. Paul Priest from the Niagara Falls Girls Soccer Club, who presented a check to us in the amount of $75,000 as part of the ongoing partnership contribution towards the Kaler Park Home for Girls Soccer Facility. Our welcome, Paul and Dan.
Thank you.
And ladies?
First of all, on behalf of Niagara Falls Girls Soccer Club and the ladies that work so hard all year for us, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to come before you to make this presentation. We've had an ongoing relationship with the city, and we hope that we continue on with that through many, many more years. In the pamphlet you're going to receive is just kind of a background of what we've done in the past and where we plan on moving in the future. I'm going to start the presentation off just by looking into a little bit of what we've been doing out at Home for Girls Soccer in Taylor Road. The one picture there that the girls are holding up on the far right is what Home for Girls Soccer hopefully will look like in the next coming years. We represent about 1,600 members. That's just girls that play soccer in the city. In this group, we have an under-four development program. We have an under-five-to-over-16 house league, which plays mainly all at a Home for Girls Soccer. However, we do have a shortage of fields, so some of them are playing elsewhere. We have an under-10-to-under-21 competitive program, and this includes three OWSL teams, which is Ontario Women's Soccer League teams, which includes one provincial, which is the highest level you can play at. We've developed a partnership, and this partnership, we feel, has worked quite well in the past with the city. We've been around since 1973. And this partnership is a 50-50 split. That means everything we do there is 50-50 both ways. With this, we've developed the eight fields that you see there. This includes three minis, two micros, two seniors, and one international field. It's the largest field we have in the region, including St. Cassens, I believe, it's all the way up to Oakville. Included in this is fencing around the two largest fields because we felt they needed to be protected, along with lighting, which we've actually developed over the years. Lighting is all in place, and that's been done with the partnership with the city as And we've also had to put in a paved lot. That was last year. That's on the far side of the fields in the school parking. And to date, if you notice there, we've put into this venture almost half a million dollars. That's just the club itself, and the city's put in the rest. So $450,000 total so far. This moves us on to our next step, and this is where I hope the city will support where we're moving to. Our next phase is developing the two large fields in front. This is to continue the growth of the park to make it a premier sporting facility. It also will maximize field usage and create new soccer, and throughout, not just soccer alone, but community sport opportunities. If you notice here, we're looking at the very first field, this large one, that's the international-sized field, that's one we're looking at putting an all-weather turf field on. The benefits. Decreased skiing cancellations due to weather conditions. We've had a lot of those, and I'm sure most of the people that work for the city can attest to that. It's been a difficult time, especially getting things started in May. They would prefer starting probably near the end of June with all the rain that happened. Also, we're looking at it as a multipurpose facility, which would include rugby, football, and other user groups who want to use the field. Okay, so it's not just soccer. This will also extend the season. We can have leagues that will play out in spring and fall, so again, carrying out the way these girls want to play. Some of them don't want to stop when the weather comes in in September. I think this year, we could have played right up into middle of January. The next one is, I believe, a very important feature of this. This will allow us to have tournaments outside of the normal soccer season. So if we look at normal soccer finishing in near the end of August, September, now we can carry on in September, October. The economic impact would be that hotels, which I've already talked to a few of them, would love to have another large group come in as a tournament. We could have several tournaments running on different weekends. So it's a great opportunity to bring in more money into the area. Maintenance costs. This is a huge factor. A lot of the things they do on the field right now, again, just sprinkler systems, fixing the field, the grass, it's a lot of money to maintain them. This will cut down on the maintenance. The companies that we have looked at will maintain these fields for a five-year period. That's all included in the price that we're looking at, so the city doesn't have to cover any of it, which is great. Now, this is where the partnership, I believe, comes in. The conversion of the field, again, the 50-50 split. Estimated cost is going to be in the neighborhood of $800,000 to $900,000. Previously in the past, we were looking at an indoor facility, and because of the demise of that facility, we feel that the direction we should be taking here is a all-weather turf field. We're beginning with the first one. I want to look further on as developing possibly three all-weather turf fields, which would really benefit the city. And we've also been looking into sponsors, and these sponsors would be placed directly on the field. As you can see here, I've given you the Trent Excalibur. This is how they actually design the field with the infrared on the field, and we can actually have sponsors going around the field itself as part of this, and donating different things, and even advertising each year, putting in so much money each year to cover the costs of the field. The membership is also big contributing. We've done a lot of fundraisers. We're going to continue to do fundraisers to help support this over the next few years. And that's it for that presentation. I just wanted to say thank you again for allowing us to come here. And on behalf of the club, we've given you another $75,000 as part of our commitment to that park and hopefully continued support in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Paul and Dan and all the ladies involved with Minor Soccer, the Board of Directors, this council certainly appreciates your partnership. I know it had begun a number of years ago, but it's worked out very well. So I want to congratulate you on behalf of the members of council for your efforts and actually doing what you've done and raising the dollars you have raised. So thank you very much. Congratulations. Are maybe members of council wish to make some comments as well? Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. October. Yes, Counselor Daddi?
Well, your worship, I think it'd be appropriate if we refer this to parks and recreation for consideration for our budget process. I think it's a great.
Moved by Counselor Daddi, right? Seconded by Counselor Wayne. Any discussion on the matter? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried, Nancy. And we'll accept the check. Is that, can we do that? We prefer cash. Ladies, thank you very much for your contribution, and we do accept this on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much. Members of council, the next item on the agenda is a presentation from the YMCA. This evening, we have Mr. Greg Schue and Mr. Steve Butts, who presented a check in the amount of $400,000 as part of the ongoing partnership towards the McBain Community Center. So the checks are increasing, so we appreciate that. Welcome, Greg and Steve. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Ted. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Greg Schue, and I'm very pleased to be here in my role as Chair of the Board of the YMCA of Niagara to pass along an update on the ongoing and remarkable story that the McBain Community Center continues to tell. I'm joined by Steve Butts, CEO of the YMCA of Niagara, who will follow with some brief remarks as well. First, the numbers. Since opening, the YMCA within the MCC has grown beyond all expectations. Membership has grown some 16% year over year, now up to 7,400 members. Since opening, we have grown over 420%. Recently, we've launched a new family value program, which now sees 65% of all YMCA members participating as part of a family. Our commitment to inclusiveness has provided financial assistance for 21% of our members, representing an investment exceeding $500,000. Youth outreach, camping, and leadership programs have engaged another 1,500 young people outside of membership. In combination with our other program areas of childcare and employment programs, the YMCA is now serving over 10,000 citizens in Niagara Falls. While the numbers tell one story, my perspective as an active family user is that the MCC has become much more than just a building. It is a center for the community, a place that helps to integrate Niagara Falls, bringing all of us together, young and old, able and disabled, rich and poor, to grow, develop, learn, to get healthy, and to nurture families. Thanks for that transformation goes to many, but especially the partners whose commitment to work together continues to grow and involves to the benefit of Niagara Falls. That was our promise in the community campaign, one that raised $3.1 million, a million dollars over gold. While our campaign is now complete, the administration campaign is not. Pledges are still outstanding. A thank you campaign has been wrapped up, and we remain committed to ongoing communications with our donors. I am pleased tonight to pass along another campaign installment in the amount of $250,000, which brings our total cash received and transferred to the city in the order of $2 million. With that, I thank you for your attention and invite Steve to take your words.
Thank you, Greg. Good news, it's $450,000 tonight. In addition to the $250,000 pledge, I will add another $200,000, representing year three of the YMCA's five-year investment of $1 million towards the construction and development of the MCC. We believe this investment speaks volumes to our commitment, not just to the McBain Community Center, but to our work throughout the city. While part of this presentation speaks to numbers and dollars, I would ask you to reflect for a moment on the theme of community benefit. Through the MCC, children are learning new skills and meeting new friends. Over 300 youth are developing their capacity as young leaders and learning to give back to the community. Thousands of adults are taking responsibility for their own health, in part alleviating the burden on traditional healthcare. Families are connecting, building bonds, meeting new people in a place that is committed to building stronger communities through the power of service and partnership. As one of those partners, we remain very thankful for the strong and trusting relationship we have with our City of Niagara Falls staff colleagues, John McDonald, Denise Morrissey, and Steve Hamilton, and the support of you, Mr. Mayor, and this council. We look forward to not only the continued growth of the YMCA and the MCC, but to seek new opportunities by which our organizations can better serve the community through collaboration. Thank you for your attention, and in addition to a couple of checks, I'll now pass along. Greg and I would welcome any questions.
Thank you very much. And members of council, any questions for Mr. Butts or Mr. Schue? Having seen none, again, I'd like to congratulate you and thank you very much for your commitment and your dedication. I think this is certainly an excellent facility. Obviously, we have great use. As you know, we've expanded the parking lot already. It's nice to go there and see the facility being used, and I think our community and our city, our residents appreciate all the good efforts on behalf of the Y and what you do in providing access for everyone in the city who wishes to be there. So thank you on behalf of members of council, and I'd be glad to accept your checks. The next presenter this evening, member of council, is Mrs. Claire Maswell, the Executive Director from Multicultural Network of Niagara Falls, who will make a presentation on the services offered to the newcomer population of our city by the multicultural network. Welcome, Claire.
Thank you. Mayor Salcy, city councilors, I see some faces I know are on the table, but there's some that I don't know. We've been in the city of Niagara Falls just going into our 11th year of providing services to immigrants who choose to live in the city of Niagara Falls and helping to settle them. How do I work this, Dean?
I'll check it for you.
Oh, thank you. So just to give you a little bit of history, I'll give you some information about the humble beginnings. In 1996, I had a co-op student that came to the Welland Multicultural Center from the Niagara Falls to do some training in her school studies. She told me about the people in Niagara Falls that didn't have any help and what was happening with them. So we decided to see what we could do for them, and we contacted St. Anne's School at the time and set up a settlement office within that structure. We started at the Stanford Collegiate because we have a 31-year partnership with the District School Board of Niagara, and we hosted English classes with a settlement counseling component. The support group held meetings at the Niagara Falls Recreation Department, Canadian-Serbian Cultural Hall, Morgan Funeral Hall, and we went everywhere near the city of Niagara Falls trying to find a place to be. And finally, after the press did a story, we were welcomed to St. Paul's Lutheran Evangelical Church where we still reside. We held an open house to gain recognition of our presence in Niagara Falls, and the Board of Directors was developed. The board developed our operating documents, and we've been working together ever since. We did anti-racism events at Niagara College Mid of the Mist and at Club Italia. We had the Deputy Minister in Niagara Falls. We did two diversity conferences with Americana Conference Center and two strategic planning forums. We participated annually in the Canada Day celebrations and were members of the Chamber of Commerce of Niagara Falls. The Regional Immigrant Women's Group did COGCO shows on barriers to successful integration within the region. So we looked at issues for newcomers about housing, schools, landlord and tenant rights, family violence, and racism. The board and staff did COGCO talk shows to promote our services, and we participated in United Way community planning sessions. We served over 9,000 newcomers to Canada in the city of Niagara Falls in the last 10 years. In partnership with the Canadian Council of Muslim Women, we developed an emergency shelter, and they helped to outfit the shelter. And with the Seventh Day at Bendis Church, we opened a shelter in the city of Niagara Falls for a time until we had some problems, and we had to close it. Because we're central to the Niagara region, we do most of the training for all regional settlement counselors in the city of Niagara Falls. We have English as a Second Language classes every day, Monday through Friday. Our teaching staff must have a Bachelor of Education as a minimum. Most of our teachers have a Master's Degree and the teaching English as a Second Language TESL certification. They must have both documents in order to teach in our facilities. We do workshops on living and working in the community and in Canada. We have many, many partners that we work with, Women's Place, Nova House. And I'm going to save the CATES Job Search Skills Program for a little bit later on down the road because it's a very important part of what we do. So we teach them about power of attorney and wills, family violence, issue insurance and driving, family law, Revenue Canada. We do an income tax clinic. They come in to do all the income tax for them for the first year. Talk about recycling, housing, fire department, emergency services, dental hygiene, and many other programs that are initiated by the questions that newcomers or immigrants ask us when they come into our office. We provide full-time settlement counseling. Our settlement counselors expert at the immigration process, and we do all, filling out all the forms for immigration, right from the time they become a refugee into the community or they come in as landed immigrants, right up to and including Canadian citizenship. We had 162 new clients came to our office in Niagara Falls. We currently have 1,609 current clients, so that's talking about all year. So that's some that come back that have been here. And over 9,005 immigrants have been served in 11 years. The settlement program is funded through United Way of Niagara Falls. We have a unique partnership with the Canadian Mental Health Association. We provided mental health services for Spanish-speaking women. That was an excellent program where we had a Spanish-speaking woman from Mexico, who is a psychologist with a Master's Degree, and she worked with the Canadian Mental Health Association together in partnership. So it was a win-win situation that the people that are Spanish-speaking got the help they needed, and someone that was a new immigrant to the community used her skills in Canada. I want to thank publicly all the volunteers that come from the different services in Niagara Falls to talk to our clients in the office and give them some information about living and working here. And our funding for our programs is, as I said, through the District School Board of Niagara, provide the English as a Second Language programs and the United Way of Niagara Falls, along with some funding from the Newcomer Settlement Program with the provincial government. And we do some fundraising initiatives. Again, there's our partners, along with Service Canada. We provide summary jobs for young adults in the community. So Project Chair, I wanted to mention specifically because they do a lot with our clients in providing food and emergency basic needs when they first come into the community. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight, and I just wanted to give you a little bit more information on the CATES program. Canadian Access for International Professionals and Skill Trades is a program that we developed. You have public brochure in your packages, and that program deals specifically with international professionals who come with degrees from other countries. We help them get the accreditation that they need. We can work with employers to provide employers with the assessments through World Education Services or the other accreditation bodies that we work with. We've helped them develop what we call a life plan so that they can go into survival jobs, but we want them to continue to get their accreditation back in Canada. We bring the professional associations from wherever they are, down to the Niagara region to talk to the people who are professionals. And we're talking about doctors, lawyers, engineers, accountants, and all of those types of professions. We have the International Medical Graduate Program, where we have given them books to study from, and we're pleased to tell you that we have eight doctors that are now in their residency program and hopefully will come back to Niagara. We worked with a group of business people who gave us a pot of $50,000 to help pay for people getting their accreditation back and for examinations to get people back into their own programs in Canada. So we've developed extensive partnerships to provide services not only for the newcomers, but also for employers in the Niagara region. We also have assessments for language training. We have two assessors that will come out to the office and will provide, using the Canadian Language Benchmark, an assessment tool for employers so you understand what level the new people that you may be hiring in this community, what language level they would have. And if there's any golfers in the group, we have the Beat the Heat Tournament, Sunday, May 27, at 7:00 a.m. TIO at the Niagara Falls Golf Club. And before I close, I'd like to introduce the President of our Board of Directors, who's a movie director from Bulgaria behind the COGCO camera, Stan Kedda. And Pastor Dean Willick in St. Paul's Way of Research. Thank you very much, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you. Members of council, do you have any questions of Claire at all? I've had the opportunity to attend your annual meeting, and thank you very much for that, and also for the good work you do with the immigrants to our city and our area. And I'd like to thank you and the pastor for the provision of the programs that you developed, certainly in the facilities that are there. I think you're making a big difference, and we really appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next order of business on the agenda, the city members of council, is a presentation by Bernadette Seko requesting heritage designation for specific Fallsview properties. Welcome, Bernadette.
Thank you. I know Dean will get this right or else I have to dance. Thank you. Mayor Salcy, members of council and staff. Mayor Salcy, members of council and staff, thank you very much for the opportunity to address council. My name is Bernadette Seko. I'm a resident of Niagara Falls, and I am here regarding an issue of personal interest. I have already supplied you with details of my concerns and copies of supporting documents. I am here to ask council to consider beginning the process for a heritage designation of the Falls View Observation Deck. It's also called the Pedestrian Deck at Falls View. This is a tiny piece of land, a triangle of interlocking bricks. It's about 100 feet long, and it goes about 85 feet wide to the narrow point at the Loretto End. I took these photographs yesterday at 11:15. These are not any members of my family. They are, in fact, people who were there of their own volition. Instead, from the pedestrian deck, residents and visitors alike can see this magnificent of nature preserved with the cooperation of the Niagara Parks Commission and the New York State Park System. The significance of the falls cannot be considered in isolation. The worldwide attraction to the falls includes the surrounding green space. The falls have been visually shielded from the encroaching high-rise commercial development and visually enhanced by the Queen Victoria Park and the escarpment as it's been managed by the Niagara Parks Commission. The Parks Commission grounds heightened a sense of pristine nature with the Green Barrier repeated on the U.S. side. And together with the sound of the falling water and the open sky above, the falls are framed by nature in an internationally recognized and entrancing vista. This is the Niagara Falls experience, and this is why tourists and residents come to Niagara Falls and to Falls View. You don't get the same experience at Table Rock where the rain tends to spoil it, or from the deck at the New Casino where the trees get in the way of the view. In 1963, an agreement between the municipality of Niagara Falls and the previous owners was that no buildings other than a pedestrian deck should be erected on the lands. Basically, the owners agreed to keep it a pedestrian deck and build nothing higher than the height of the sidewalk. And they agreed to these restrictions and that these restrictions would bind anyone who ever owned or purchased those lands. The city's primary purpose for restricting the land and air rights was to preserve, conserve, and maintain the view of Falls View, to prevent its destruction or loss, and to ensure free access to the pedestrian deck for residents and visitors alike. 26 years later, in 1989, Manicello Brothers Limited decided to purchase the property. They were aware of that time of the restrictive covenants on the land and the air rights. They purchased the property and agreed to the conditions. And they have taken very good care of the property with a lovely interlocking brick walk, an observation area, a black chain-link fence that doesn't obstruct the view, and there are binoculars for anybody who wants to bring the falls 10 times closer to them. The official plan reinforces the significance of this property as a public viewing area by designating it as an open space plaza. This is taken at the Loretto End looking north. The pedestrian deck is up on the left behind the chain-link fence. And you'll see the sloping area, which is included in this property. It slopes down to the old railroad tracks. The owners have both the land and air rights above the deck and the sloping section. The lower end are the former railway lands purchased by the city for the People Mover and the Grand Boulevard. The owners have the air rights that start 23 feet above the old tracks. Despite restrictive covenants registered on title and notwithstanding the owners' clear understanding of the intention and continuance of these restrictions, in September last year, the owners asked the city to release them from the restrictive covenants. Once the release was granted, the owners planned to apply to rezone the lands for proposed 30-story hotel on the lands that you're looking at. The request to remove the restrictions was withdrawn by the owners. Previous councils have approved development that did not comply with the city's tourist area development strategy. Today, because of a wall of hotels almost 120 meters long, the only place remaining from which to view the falls and Falls View are these lands protected by the pedestrian deck agreement. Any development on these lands will permanently eliminate the last remaining street-level opportunity for residents and tourists to embrace the much coveted panorama, the view of the falls from Falls View at no cost. In September last year, when I started thinking about this, both the Marriott and the Sheridan Falls View had rooms with a view available at $400 a night and more. Sheridan has a $199 room. And I'm sure both owners will tell you that they have less expensive rooms. The point is that free costs a lot less than any hotel room that is going to go on that site and charge the people to view the falls. That view, I believe, should be available to everyone forever. In October of 2006, I learned of the amendments to Ontario's Bill 51. It gives the municipality greater powers, including the promotion of development designed to be sustainable, to support public transit, and to be oriented to pedestrians. Preserving the properties for historical reasons will also ensure that the railway lands of Falls View will be used for the People Mover and the Grand Boulevard. I've listed my reasons why I believe the property split the criteria for a heritage designation as a cultural heritage landscape under the Ontario Heritage Act. That's in that information that I gave you, and I apologize it for so long. But today, the land and air rights of the sloped area and the air rights above the former rail lands of the larger portion of this section are now for sale. This adds a certain urgency to my request. The city of Niagara Falls Board of Museums has been kind enough to support my efforts. The Board of Museum agrees that heritage landscapes such as this are important to the cultural history of our community. I believe that there is public support for the preservation of the view of the falls from Falls View. I started an online petition which today has 311 signatures. Some of them are locals, but most of them are international, those people who come to Niagara Falls at a rate of 14 million a year. I humbly submit my request to council that you consider a heritage designation for this simple but historically and communally significant property, the stewardship of Falls View, the pedestrian deck of Falls View, and the associated land and air rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bernadette. Are there any questions of Bernadette this evening? Yes, councillor Wing.
Not a question. I'd just like to say I believe she's right in this being very significant to our community. And I know the Ontario Heritage Act allows for vistas and re-scape and outlooks to be protected. So, I think referring this, and we have something from staff as well, I think referring this to the Municipal Heritage Committee for report back from them is the appropriate way to proceed at this point, so I will make that motion.
So, moved by councillor Wing, seconded by your secondary councillor Wing's motion to refer to the heritage. Yes, councillor Wing.
My motion is to refer this request, the matter, to the Municipal Heritage Committee for report back. So, just refer it over, get the Municipal Heritage Committee's advice and opinion on this.
Yes, seconded by councillor Diodati. We have a comment from our city clerk with respect to that. So, Member of council, any discussion with regard to the motion? Yes, councillor, you want?
If we refer that and it comes back to designate, are we committed to designate that?
Perhaps, Mr. Hulovic, could we ask you to address that, please? Our deputy planner.
Yes, Your Worship. It's entirely council's decision. The Municipal Heritage Committee has advised we only to council, and they're aware of that.
Good. Then answer the question, please. Okay. Any other questions? Yes, councillor Maves.
My concern is the owners of the property aren't here to say anything about this, and perhaps they should be consulted or they should have some input into this, and I'd like to see that if that's going to happen.
Okay. Mr. Hulovic, could you address that, please? Are the owners notified or should they be present at this meeting?
At this point, up to council as to whether or not they wish to go in that direction. The Heritage Act doesn't require the owners to be consulted until such a time as council's going to proceed with designation, but normally there is a liaison that would go on between the municipality and the property owner.
Good. Thank you. Yes, councillor Adoni.
Through you to Miss Seko. Did you contact the owners to tell them you would be here tonight for this?
No, actually, I was quite surprised. I saw Miss Gilberti out in the lobby, and I thought she was here for this purpose. She's here for another one. I erroneously assumed that the clerk's department apprised us anyone who has an interest in an issue that comes to council, or else I'm sure that I would have apprised them.
Maybe through you then to Dean. Dean, did we let them know that this was an issue before us, that they might want to send a representative?
For the chair, no, we did not. It'd be difficult for me to determine who might be interested in every manner. Also, the fact that we were making the recommendation that this be referred to the Municipal Heritage Committee, and I figured through that process, there would be some consultation with the property owner. And there was no expectation the council would make a decision to designate the property this evening.
Okay, then maybe through you to Mr. Hulovic. If we refer that, will the property owner be contacted?
Mr. Hulovic? Yes, we would contact the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, councillor Maves.
So, we're simply dealing with just a referral?
Yes. Is that it?
Thank you.
Okay. This time we'll call the vote. And all those in favor? One, two, three, four? Opposed? One opposed and two opposed? I'm sorry, two opposed and two abstentions. Thank you. Motion's carried. Thank you very much, Bernadette. Next item on the agenda, Member of council, I'm going to ask the clerk to sit down, please.
Bernadette, stop playing with my computer.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you kind of please introduce the next item on the agenda?
Your Worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider an amendment to the city zoning bylaw to permit a proposed expansion of a plaza located at 425 Monro... or, sorry, Dorchester Road, known as Monroe Plaza. Notice was given by First Class Mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Thursday, April 5th, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw or to participate in a site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheet outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'm going to ask the deputy planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hulovic?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. This property involves lands at the southwest corner of Dorchester Road and Thorl Townline... or, sorry, Thorl Stone Road. The applicant is Curtis Gale Development, and it does the circuit outline which found the existing plaza on the lands. The map in front of you shows the location of the property. To the west of this property is a hydro corridor as well as a number of single detached dwellings. To the east of the property are largely commercial properties. As there are to the northeast of this land, and then to the north across Thorl Stone Road are further residential properties. The application is a request to change the southern portion of the land from the current R4 zoning to neighborhood commercial zone. This would allow them to expand the existing commercial plaza to accommodate offices, some small retail stores, medical offices, as well as a drive-through restaurant. The current R4 zoning permits 15 townhouse unit development on the site. The intention at the time that this property was developed with the plaza was that the townhouse property would form a transition between the commercial area and the existing residential dwellings that we saw on the location map. The applicant now wishes to expand that commercial plaza. The official plan for the... oh, here's the site plan for the specific property. So, the existing plaza is shown in red stripes, and the proposal is to add two buildings to the property, one to the southwest corner of the property, which would be a typical commercial plaza divided into units for offices and stores. The building closest to Dorchester Road, it was proposed that it would be a drive-through restaurant facility. At this time, I don't believe it's obtained identified. The balance of the lands would be developed for parking purposes. The green area shows the landscaping that is supposed to be incorporated on the site. The... since the... I will proceed to the next slide. The property is designated minor commercial under the official plan. The minor commercial policies provide for some rounding out of commercial properties in order to increase circulation, the economic viability of the commercial plaza, as well as improved landscaping. The proposed commercial expansion could be developed as a way to mitigate impacts by providing some increased setbacks in landscaping, which we'll discuss in a few minutes. The planning department looking at this application also has to have regard to the provincial policy statements, the growth plan of the province, both of which require that the city provide for 40% new residential growth within its built-up boundaries and that that be done primarily through intensification and redevelopment. So, there will be a growing pressure on the municipality to comply with that. That's largely done by retaining large properties and using properties for multiple family development. However, during our assessment, we believed that the loss of 15 townhouse units would not significantly impact on the city's ability to meet those provincial targets. The zoning of the property, as I've mentioned, the north part is currently zone neighborhood commercial. The south half is R4. The applicant proposes an NC on the entire property. Since the time of the original submission of this application, the applicant met with the neighboring residents, and he's since revised his plan to show that the drive-through facility, that is the actual driving lane, would be located 4 and 1/2 meters, 15 feet from the south property line. A planning department is actually recommending that that distance be increased to 10 meters, 33 feet from the south property line, which is an abiding single-family house. The... this is the same distance that we've required for another commercial plaza that is but residential properties on the cloud in Taylor Road. Similarly, the applicant has also set back the building on the southwest corner of this property, have a 25-foot rear yard. This is the same kind of rear yard that would come with the townhouse development that was proposed for the property. There has also been some concerns from the residents about truck traffic going through the plaza and the physical increase with this additional commercial development. Thorl Stone Road is to be rebuilt, and the driveway on Thorl Stone Road will be redesigned to be a right in and right out. This should control some of the activity as well as maintaining a landscaping buffer, but these are details that can be covered through the site plan process. Talking about site plan process, the traffic and parking division has recognized that there is a safety concern with the driveway location as it exits and enters onto Dorchester Road. Ideally, that driveway would be located further south. However, if that's not possible, then the city is seeking a traffic safety audit to examine that driveway and its relationship with the traffic on Dorchester Road. The amending zoning bylaw should include the setbacks that I've just outlined here, the 7 and 1/2 meters on the west side, the 10 meters on the south side, as well as the landscaping requirements and the traffic and safety study. The planning department, therefore, has concluded that while the current zoning of townhouses does provide the best arrangement for transitioning from commercial to residential, that we do believe that expansion to commercial plaza can be supported provided that the landscaping and setbacks are met. We found that the proposal did meet with the official plan policies. It is a minor rounding out of the commercial node. It's possible to mitigate the impact through site planning process and that we can provide some adequate buffers in case we want to share. So, we're recommending that the application can be supported, subject to the improvements outlined in the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hulovic. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone present other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Welcome, and please be kind enough for the record to give your name and address, please.
Yes, my name's Gerald Kenny, and my wife's Renina, live at sixty-nine sixty-seven York Drive. If the clerk could bring up the third slide showing the outline of the property. My property is at the south of the two buildings. It goes from the southwest corner, thank you, to just about halfway where the, the other building starts, the proposed coffee shop, to there. Now, I'm a little concerned with a setback of fifteen feet as it is now. Thirty feet would still not be enough, as far as I'm concerned, with the noise pollution. We all know how long cars can sit in a drive-through. And I don't think I could enjoy my rear yard anymore if this plan is to go through. Another thing is the, the entrance of, or entrance and exit off Dorchester Road. If you've ever been there, you know how long it takes for traffic to get in and out of that without an expansion of the plaza. Another thing is traffic cutting through the plaza from Thorl Stone Road because of the stoplights and going south on Dorchester would only be increased with a paved entry or paved lot in the back. Another thing, the noise from this restaurant, I was told that it could be open only until one or two o'clock in the morning, and that's, that's not good enough. With the twenty-four hours, it's even worse. I don't know, I go to bed at ten o'clock, my wife gets up at three in the morning, she goes to bed at nine o'clock. We don't want to listen to that speaker box or traffic. There are some cars with young people that have rather loud radios, and I just don't want to listen to that. I, I'm asking your support to reject his proposal, and I guess that's about it.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Mr. Kenny? Yes, Councilor Inori?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to Mr. Kenny. Mr. Kenny, under conclusion, our staff didn't like the setback either, but is requesting that the setback be back thirty-three feet, that allows landscaping and a deeper setback. But in regards to the squawk box, because I understand that would be a concern, we've dealt with this on another application quite some time ago, and it was at, if council members, Orlando Drive, and the McDonald's that was going in on Thorl Stone Road. And we worked with the residents in order to put up a retention sound barrier type fence. And since that fence went up, and that foundation's been there, we haven't had one complaint. I know that I haven't dealt with any, and I work with those residents ad nauseam on that. If something could be done along those lines, because they aren't hearing the McDonald's squawk box, so to speak, would that be amenable to you?
Uh, if, if they're going to pass it, I want the best I can get. I'm going to have to look at the back of another building, fifteen or twenty-five feet from my backyard. I'm looking at one now that's three hundred and twenty-five feet away, concrete block that's never been painted, never upcut. And who's to say that this one would be any different?
Okay, but in the concerns that you raised in regards to the squawk box and the setback, if those can be amended to a greater setback and, say, a sound barrier retention fence, would that be amenable to you? If, if we're going to pass that to get you the, to fix the concerns that you have?
Uh, if it's a decent fence, if it'll stop the noise, okay. Whether it stops the pollution or whether it will stop the noise, I don't know. I don't know how far the homes are from the McDonald's.
Okay, they're, they're rather close, which is why we had to have them insist on the retention, the noise barrier type fence. So I just wanted to know that when the applicant gets up, we can ask those questions. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Kenny? Thank you, sir. Oh, actually, sorry, Councilor Mays?
Uh, no, I was just going to, I was going to mention myself, too. I know another resident is near a coffee shop, they have a drive-through, and he said it's mainly the car radios, these young kids come through there. And I think for, for Mr. Kenny, this definitely has to be a really good sound barrier for you. So I would, as far as I'm concerned, I think that's the main issue here, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I ask for Sam and Gary DeCarlo, the owners of the land, municipal known as forty fifty-nine, I'm sorry, forty fifty-eight McKinley's Crescent, which are located to the west of the proposed development. I would like to start off by indicating that my clients are not opposed to the further development of the subject lands. However, they would have preferred the development to be of a residential nature rather than a tourmal nature. My clients are concerned about three matters as it pertains to this proposal. Number one, increased traffic on the subject lands, which will disrupt the quiet enjoyment of their home and backyard. In reviewing Schedule Two of the proposal, it is evident that traffic will be circulating along the westerly portion of the land. The proposal calls for this traffic to be a fire route. My clients earlier spoke with one of the councilors who contacted Fire Chief Lee Smith, who has indicated that fire services would be willing to consider a restriction of through traffic on the fire route by way of post and chain. Chief Smith also indicated that they would be recommending the inclusion of the fire route into the bylaw once the site plans are finalized. My clients would be satisfied in seeing that this proposed traffic be limited to a fire route only. If this matter could be addressed in the zoning bylaw, that would appease my clients' traffic concerns. My clients have also advised me that a wooden privacy fence that restricted access to the rear and westerly part of the existing plaza has been removed. My clients would like to see that fence restored as soon as possible. I was just handed these photos just a few moments ago, and unfortunately, I obviously didn't have an opportunity to make copies, and it's indicating trucks that are currently gaining access from Thorl Stone Road behind the existing plaza, and also from Dorchester Road going behind the plaza towards Thorl Stone Road. I could just have you all circulated. There's that type of traffic that obviously my clients would like to see stopped. The second concern pertains to the proposed parking along the western of the property line. If the proposed fire route is to be used solely for that purpose, then how does one access those parking spaces? The inclusion of these spaces therefore appears to contradict the existence of a fire route. The final concern relates to the placement of garbage bins. Obviously, my clients are opposed to the placement of any garbage bins within the proposed landscape strip between the plaza, proposed buildings C and their lands. I don't want to repeat all of the other concerns that Mr. Kenny has brought up, because obviously my, my clients would like to repeat those concerns with respect to the squawk box and the noise. While my clients are not happy to have the land rezoned from residential to neighborhood commercial to accommodate a drive-through coffee shop, and to have introduced all the noise, traffic, and fumes this will bring to a residential neighborhood, my clients would like to work with the applicant through the site plan stage to ensure that the proposal has minimal impact on the quiet enjoyment of their home and backyard, and to ensure the safety of their grandchildren while they play in the backyard.
Okay. Are there any questions of Ms. Gilberti? No questions? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Gilberti. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? At this time, council will hear from the applicant's representative. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Just give me an opportunity to hand myself, uh, all that to, 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 to. Although we're going to reference to the site plan that is on the presentation here, I gave these drawings here, because these drawings have been a work in progress. We have had the opportunity to meet with, or, to meet with the neighbors, to address their concerns. And I would like to start out that I think we've made several concessions and, and changes that I think will satisfy, hopefully, all of them. Throughout the presentation as well, I would like to also address the comments from the planning department, and perhaps they will intermix with some of the concerns. To deal with the neighbors first, the underlying component of noise, pollution, the traffic and so forth throughout the site, access to and from Dorchester, access to and from Thorl Stone, all these things playing an integral role in making this not only a safe site, but a successful site. To start off, I think it would be very prudent to let you know that the restaurant that is being proposed is a Williams Pub, so it can alleviate the notion that it's going to be something as a Tim Hortons, a Donut Diner, one of these restaurants that are high-traffic volume. A Williams Pub is very family-oriented. The consensus is with most of them throughout the province, they close down between the hours of ten and eleven o'clock to begin with. The drive-throughs are not a key element of the business, although it's, it's part of the business, it is not a key component of the business, so it's not like a Tim Hortons where it's thousands of cars accessing it. I'd like to start off with, to the, to talk about the privacy factor and the setback. Although the city has, has noted one other development from a drive-through, as well as referencing to another municipality of their zoning standards for setbacks, I would like to point out, now although I respect those comments, I would like to point out that this site is a little different and a little more unique, and I, I think that needs to be taken into consideration. One, in the methods, and it was brought up with things such as noise attenuation rules, the method of landscaping and so forth, has all been taken into consideration. There would obviously be a privacy fence that would surround the perimeter of the residential area. We would be proposing to do not a board-on-board fence, but a board-to-board fence, so it restricts noise, it restricts air movement, it restricts any light, headlights going through it. If you look at the page on the drawings that I gave you, it is an illustration of the landscaping that is being proposed. As you can see, it is extremely intense landscaping. It's well beyond what is required by any developer or landowner. In actual fact, if we worked with the planning department, aside from sodding and a few ornamental trees, that's all would be required on top of the fence. So you can see that my clients are willing to spend some, some excessive dollars to satisfy those needs. Now, in our original design, we did change the layout, we did push the building over to increase the setback from one point five meters to the adjoining neighbor where the drive-through is to what is on that drawing, four meters, four point five. Continual changes have been done so that we're averaging about four point eight meters for a setback. I know it's not excessive from a four point five. But what I need to also consider is if, on the same drawing, A1, the section AA, you will see that our land is not level with the adjoining lands. There is a one point five meter drop in grade elevation, which is equivalent to about four point five feet. So if you can consider the fact that a car is down four point five feet, which pretty well takes you to the hood of, of a car. On top of that, we will have a six to eight-foot fence, a six-foot fence closet, and a lattice design work, not to mention the landscaping trees that can grow in excess of ten, fifteen, twenty feet. I think that needs to be taken into consideration for the setback requirement. If it was a flat piece of land, then I think we'd be a little more apt to, to consider a larger setback. In not pushing the building over, it's kind of integral with the setback requirements. I'm sorry, I'll stay on, on the fact of the attenuation rules. On the site plan, I sketched on, you can see where we would take out parking spots, the voice box, as it's noted, would be in between the two buildings, between the side of Building C and the back of Building B. One, that would keep the noise away from the neighbors. It is also why we put Building C in its position. We felt that that building, being properly designed, will act as a good barrier between the internal parking and the drive-through to all of the neighbors. Certainly, aesthetics is going to be a consideration. The height of that building would be taken into consideration, and how it's finished in the back along with the landscaping would be taken into consideration. And what I also mean by that is, you'll see, there is no delivery access to the back of that building. The only thing on the back there will be a walkway, which will allow people to exit the fire door and get out to the parking area. So you're not going to have deliveries and a hustle and bustle of people going behind it. So that, too, is taken into consideration. Now, just moving forward with the drive-through component as well, in pushing the drive-through over, it also alters the access that we have on Dorchester. From the original design, as you can see, we had a three-width access, one in, two out. And that's going back to the comment with the planning department and the traffic study regarding the, the safety audit report. We feel we've satisfied that the requirement, and that it is really not necessary for the safety audit, in the sense that we've moved the location twice in the design from its original location. The first time we moved it southerly about fifteen meters, maintaining the three-width access. As you can see by the drawing that you have in front of you, A1, from center line to center line of the original to the proposed, we've moved it twenty-one meters, which we feel is a very safe and the optimum location. We've also reduced it to a two-car access, one in, one out. That will also restrict the movement throughout this property, which also helps in the comments with people coming in and out of it. Moving it any further to the south, we feel will be an extreme hazard. A, it will almost align itself with the property across the street, as well, it will be very close to the residential driveway, which we feel will be very dangerous in the fact that cars will be backing in and out of a residential area, not to mention cars coming in and out of that. So we feel what we've done is, is the safest and the optimum spot for it. Now, in addressing some of the concerns as far as access, privacy, and a little more pertaining to Mr. DeCarlo's comments, from the original design, we eliminated a majority of the parking spaces that were directly behind his property. We've increased the landscaping bumper to a good seventy-five to eighty percent of his property to improve the landscaping along there. We've removed the garbage enclosure that was backing onto his property, and we've put it to the back of our building A, which you can reference on, on A1. As well as, in the site plan agreement end of it, the garbage enclosures we are proposing will be roofed in, so that they will not be open-air garbage enclosures. To further restrict the access into the site, commenting on the fire route, the fire route is the optimum location to go in the back of Building A, in the front of Building C. It is the most prudent and logical spot. In actual fact, the original building, the fire route, although went around the front and out, does not meet current code standards. So it must go to the back. Now, it is the dedicated fire route, it is accurate, it does not mean that you're not allowed to have park, you can have parking stalls within it, as long as cars are not parking and blocking the fire route, it is permitted. Very typical of any commercial development, institutional development throughout. We feel by restricting the access off Thorl Stone Road, and we feel that's a very large concession in that we are only permitting a right in and a right out, that actually reduces half of the volume that potentially could come into this site. Thorl Stone Road, as everyone knows, is one of the busiest traveled roads in the region, let alone Niagara Falls. We feel by restricting it, by putting what's called the fork shop in there, trucks accessing it will not be an easy thing just to whip in and whip around the site to, to divert the intersection. We feel by having circulation in behind parking and so forth, obviously, cars will have to slow down. By the use of speed bumps and things of that nature, it will also control the circulation of the intersection. So I, I believe we've addressed those concerns with it. I would like to point out, going back just to noise and pollution, aside from the landscaping, the fencing, the fact that the, the drive-through lane rate is down four and a half feet from the average grade, this type of restaurant, as, as part of their schematic and design, will be putting a canopy over the drive-through component of the restaurant, not the whole lane rate, just where the car access is. Not the whole lane rate, just where the car access is and gets the food and beverage. That canopy is also to restrict noise, so that you don't have the noise traveling up and out. It does restrict the pollution to filtering up and out, it keeps it within that zone. We feel that was a good concession on their part to help aid the neighbor relations. So with that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions or children of comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. Are there any further questions by members of council or any of those persons present with respect to the clarification of the proposed application? Yes, Counsel Thompson and Counsel Ray.
Thank you, through the chair. Through all, I actually feel a lot better about this than when I came here today. I think it's been a sincere attempt to try to alleviate some of the problems. When I first looked at the application and talked to some of the residents with respect to their concerns, the last thing that I would like beside my residence would be a Tim Hortons with the order box, and so having a dining restaurant is certainly a step up from that. Could you tell me why it says staff parking in the building B there, right at the bottom, near the bottom of the paper, the bottom of it, it says staff parking? What is that for?
Certainly, that is actually traditional in any restaurant design when you have a queuing zone. You can anticipate that you'll have three to four cars queuing in behind the building as it turns around. That staff parking obviously will be for the people working in the restaurant, so that those are the cars that will not be coming and going on a continual basis, so that they're not being blocked off by any cars that potentially are queuing in that area.
So you're telling me there's staff parking in that particular area beside the building?
Yes.
And so the building is really smaller than the dark outline there, is that right?
No, that building is the actual, the building B is the outline, you've got the loading zone, and then you've got the staff parking right behind it.
Maybe it's a interpretation.
My drawing shows staff parking along here. Is that not true? I see if you can put it. There's a staff parking here. I apologize. It's a typo. It's a typo, so it's not staff parking. Was this done by a different architect than yourself?
It's called drafting staff.
Was there, and I appreciate some of your comments, was there any consideration, and I think you addressed this, of moving the restaurant over to the main part of the state building and trying to work it in there?
We did, Mr. Thompson, and there's a couple of issues that we have to deal with. One, the Williams Pub in their franchise requirements must be a standalone building. By pushing the building, and if we kept it standalone and pushed it against the original building and made it part of it, you're still going to have the drive-through access that's still going to be in the middle and create more chaos within the central part of your parking lot.
But it would have been way further away from the properties. Can you tell me a little more about this canopy over top of the lane rate?
The canopy itself will be an open-air structure. Obviously, we'll have our two columns on the side wall, and we'll just have a very rose-sloped pitch roof.
Okay, so this won't be canvas, or this will be a regular roof?
It'll be a regular structure with a metal roof or an asphalt shap.
Okay, and I can see the landscaping and the, could you describe the fence for me again?
Fence itself, in typical development between a residential and a commercial zone, board-on-board fence is typical, where you have your 4-inch plank separated by a 2-inch gap, and you alternate it on sides, so that wind, light, and stuff can travel through it. A board-to-board fence would be tied up to each other, so that there's no movement through it. Fence would be 6 feet tall, and then would have a lattice on it.
The order box, or the squawk box, as they've been suggesting, is that that black dot right at the back of the property there?
Yes, it is, at the back of that building, yes.
Counsel Ray.
Ms. Allen, you said that drive-throughs are not a key element of the restaurant business proposed. Would it be possible for the restaurant to concede without the drive-through lane component?
I don't think I'm in a position to comment on that. I don't represent Williams Pub. When I say that it's not a key component, it's no different than if you look at a Starbucks or something of that nature. Starbucks is mostly where people go in, sit down, have their beverages and so forth, but they do have drive-throughs, although not on a timely basis as busy as a Tim Hortons. I think if you look at a Tim Hortons or some of that nature, if you weigh their revenue, the drive-through probably equates to well over 50 percent of their.
My concern is that we're not approving a Williams Pub, and if the Williams Pub in this location is not successful, but there's approval in place for a drive-through that would carry over, and the residents in the area could indeed end up with a McDonald's or a Tim Hortons just over their backyard or side yard fences someday in the future. I would be happy to support this without the drive-through facility. I don't think I can support it with that drive-through facility, but if we can take that out, then I'll be very happy to.
Ms., this is Ray, if I could comment on that. One, I think the owners of the property are, again, for making concessions, are willing to restrict the type of uses that are going in this property, which is done through the zoning process. One, in the main commercial building at the back, we would be restricting variety stores, restaurants, pool halls, tattoo parlors, things of that nature, again, more on the professional end of it. I think it would be prudent, or perhaps in consideration, that it is site-specific to the fact that it is a Williams Pub that we're trying to put in there, and that if it is not a Williams Pub, then perhaps the drive-through issue must be brought back to Counsel for consideration.
Your worship, through your staff, is this possible that it be restricted to the only drive-through facility that could operate there with the Williams Pub?
Mr. Beeman or Mr. Hillrich? Mr. Beeman? Restrictive covenant, entitled?
I love very much that such a thing can be achieved with zoning bylaw. I suppose if the owners would consider it, we could try a restrictive covenant. That would be the technique that we'd have to employ to achieve that.
Yeah, we'd register that title and enforce the bill upon any further orders as well.
We'd have to work on figuring out what the dominant tenement of the covenant would be, and that would be, I think, the main consideration. A covenant of that type has to identify land and benefits from the covenant. So we'd have to work in conjunction, I think, with the neighboring property owners to establish the dominant tenement.
Thank you. Counsel Ray, is there any further you have? Counsel Ray?
I'm sorry.
Anything further? Okay, next I have Counsel Peter Angelo.
Thank you, worship. A few months ago, the developer, as well as Mr. Allen, came down to City Hall, had a meeting with the area residents and the planning staff, and I was able to attend the meeting. Your worship, I don't disagree with the rezoning that's in front of us today. I understand that there are some issues from the residents. Those issues, I guess, deal with setbacks, with traffic patterns, with traffic calming, with different types of landscaping. Most of those issues, your worship, or if not all of them, can be addressed at the site plan stage. I am pleased to see that the setbacks that are being proposed in the zoning stage are consistent with those that were of the residential nature, in the sense that Building C in specific will be set back 25 feet from the property line. The only question that I have for Mr. Allen is, at the meeting that we were at, it was mentioned that there was talks with the region of moving the driveway onto Thorlstone Road west of where it is now, so that it would be, I guess, further away from Dorchester Road. And I'm wondering whether or not there's been any development in those talks.
Peter Angelo, yes, there has been, but again, it's with Hydro, with the region, with the owners of the property. There has been some general discussions with the city as well, and it's not as just being One, that component of the Hydro corridor, I believe, falls within residential plan components, so that area has to be dealt with, so that you can access into a commercial area, which currently you cannot go through a residential zone to access commercial into it. There have been talks really between the region and the Hydro. It's at that point. It hasn't gone much further than our last meeting a couple of months ago, but it is ongoing.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think, your worship, that if perhaps the driveway does get moved westerly of where it is now, then that would just, I guess, lend credence to the issue of people probably cutting through the plaza. I mean, I know that it's a very long light at Dorchester and Thorlstone Road right now. Many times, people have to wait two, three changes, and that the plaza, and I'm guilty myself, is used as a cut-through from Thorlstone Road to Dorchester Road. Yes, I am, I'm sorry. But if the driveway is moved westerly, your worship, I can see that it would be easier to actually do it, so hopefully, we'll get to the site planning stage, and we can look at traffic calming. Thank you.
Your worship, if I may add with that, what's also going to assist in alleviating people cutting through this, the plans of the city and the region to extend mediums down these roads. Down Thorlstone, there will be a medium that's going to go a further distance to where our driveway access is, so on top of our right-in and right-out only, the medium is going to restrict anybody being able to cut across and cut through the property.
Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo.
That would be true, your worship, of anyone that would be traveling northbound on Dorchester trying to get on the Thorlstone Road, but anyone that would be traveling east on Thorlstone Road, planning entering south on Dorchester, it would be very simple to do.
Good point, that's fine. Okay. Any other comments from members of council? Those in the audience, then, Ms. Goberki? Yes, would you like to come forward, please? With respect to the clarification.
Just because my client has just had an opportunity just right now to review the revised plan, my client was curious to know if it's possible to remove the two parking spaces that are left behind his lot, and to put the chain and post here, so that access for the fire route can be gained through, and also the access through for the parking can be gained both ways, to stop thoroughway, or the through-way traffic going through.
Ms. Goberki, we can't.
I just wanted to show it to Mr. Allen first, so he could speak to his client while I don't know how to show it on that plan.
Is this my reference property in that plan?
No. On the plans that Mr. Allen had just distributed, if we look at that, there's the dotted lines, which are halfway down through the plaza property. That is one of the boundary lines of my client's property. Just to the east of that, there are two parking spaces that are located. My client was suggesting or requesting that those two parking spaces be eliminated, and that the chain and post then be placed there to stop the through-traffic going through. This way, these parking spaces that are left can still be accessed through on both sides, and it'll stop the through-traffic going through, other than the fire route. Because if the whole intention is to produce a fire route that is applicable or complies with code, then that will comply with that requirement. It'll allow for the access to these parking spaces both ways, and it'll stop the trucks from going through and other traffic, such as motorcycles and cars, and whatever other type of vehicles are going to be making use of this.
Is there a situation that will prevent the delivery of goods to the rear of the property by the trucks?
No, because the trucks can still access in from Dorchester Road onto the property and go into the back of the property, behind Building A by Building C and Building B. So the deliveries can still be made, it'll just stop the through-traffic from going through. It'll protect the fire route requirement, and it'll stop that other avenue, or that other quick way through from Thorlstone to Dorchester.
Is that clear to members of council, their questions? Now, there's still some confusion?
Your worship, if I could just go around, perhaps, because it's still difficult for me to explain it otherwise.
Maybe we can move this way. Okay, thank you. Members of council, our staff hasn't had a chance to view this as well, so. Okay, I know. Okay, members of council, I'd like to call the mini-back order, please. Our staff hasn't had a chance to view the proposal, and can't give us a comment either. And we're not sure if this is acceptable. Mr. Allen, is this acceptable to your client, and could this be dealt with in a site plan agreement?
Well, a couple of things, and something for consideration for everybody looking at it. Common sense is a very important component of this site, because we are dealing with and have to respect the fact that this is what we call the failure of success, and that's a kudos to Niagara Falls. Thorlstone and Dorchester has become a very, very busy intersection. That's good. This development was here many years ago, when the intersection wasn't so busy. There's the opportunity to develop the land, and any design that goes into it must take into consideration the safety, the privacy, and all these factors of the neighbors and the people using this site. To eliminate those two parking spaces, perhaps we could consider that. And I think in doing so, we would have to reduce the area of one of the buildings, because we need all the parking on the site. Unless the planning department was willing to have a consensus, we have some parking spaces that are on our property that are part of Hydro lands. Those are not counted in our parking count, because it's not our land. If planning department was able, in actual fact, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven parking spaces that are not part of our count. If the planning department was willing to make a concession to say, take those two out, and we can utilize these seven as part of our count, then we could take them out. The comment of putting the chain across the limit access doesn't make sense. One, it is the fire route, and if that's all it was, I could say, yes, perhaps we could restrict it. It is important that people can circulate through the site, so that we're not forcing people out, funneling out into two accesses. What will happen if we put that chain there, is people are going to drive around, stop, realize there's a chain, rip their car in degree, and reverse back up, create more noise, more fumes, more aggravation for not only the people here, but the neighbors. The common sense is if we keep it clean flowing, reduce the speed through speed bumps and things of that nature, to get the cars out of there. I think dealing with the design component of fencing, and as you can see from the original design, we didn't only increase it by 5 feet, we've increased it by 20 feet behind Mr. DeCarlo's property. My clients would also be willing to work within reason with Mr. DeCarlo, and we stated it at the pre-public meeting, that we would also work on his property, again, within reason, to improve the landscaping, not only in ours, but within the proper backyard of his as well, to increase the barrier. And I say that within reason, because that could flow into the site plan agreement aspect of it. So I think putting all those together, and I think the concession of eliminating the parking spaces, but we need the access.
Comments for Counsel Ray and Counsel Thompson?
Thank you. I think the problem could be solved by simply use a signage, not a through route or whatever, but this matter is becoming more complex, and I think we need to refer it back to staff at this point. We need to investigate the restrictive covenant, we need to have staff investigate the removal of the two parking spots and the implications of that. So, you know, we shouldn't be doing it like this here. We really need these matters to go back to staff, and them to come back with another report on the implications of these.
Yes, Ms. Buzz, Ms. Allen?
I can appreciate your comment, Ms. Ray, but it's also a matter, and aside from myself, my clients have been in this meeting for a long time. That's what site plan agreement is for. One, we're requesting that the zoning be moving forward, because there's the urgency of making sure the deal closes with Williams Pub, so that we are not dealing with the issue of it being some other franchise going there with the drive-through. Williams Pub is anxious to get going, it's a development in the city, it's more tax dollars in the city, it's more jobs through the construction. We are willing, as we always have been, to work very closely with the planning department, as well as the neighbors in the site plan agreement, to make sure things are satisfied, satisfactory work through, and I would ask your consideration on that behalf as well.
Counsel Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I was pleased to hear, and traffic is really affected by traffic humps or bumps. This is, you've mentioned that a couple of times. What would you be doing as far as the route in behind there? How would you control? If you have two or three bumps in there, that's going to certainly deter people from even taking a shortcut through there.
The logical route is every time you start turning again, you put a speed bump, so they don't have an opportunity to accelerate the cars. And we've got one, two, three, we've got four.
access to the property involved, it's not a big issue. Unfortunately, uh, staff doesn't have advantage of being able to take a look at the plans that are being, uh, that the changes are being proposed on and, uh, just for a point of clarification with the fireworks, we don't mandate, uh, post and chain detail. We can accept it and negotiate, or not negotiate, but agree to allow them to be put in certain circumstances, but we don't actually mandate that they go in. So, uh, just for consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel.
Uh, yes, Your Worship, yeah, I'm, I'm not, uh, as interested in posting gate. I agree the idea of backing up. I'd rather see traffic calming, some speed humps, uh, especially if there are kids that like their cars or their motorcycles, speed humps are an enemy to these types of people. I think, uh, a lot of the outstanding issues can be dealt with in the site plan and, um, when the time comes, I'll, I'll make the motion move this forward with the restrictive covenant pertaining to the Williams Pub. Uh, I believe that the fencing, the lighting, the speed humps are all things that can be dealt with at this point and I would also, as, as customary, uh, ask that all the neighbors, the residents be involved in the site plan so they can help, you know, determine the fencing and the lighting and, and the speed humps are all satisfactory.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, members of council, those present? Okay, having seen none, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning by, by law amendment is now concluded. On the pleasure of council, Counsel Diodati?
Yes, Your Worship, I would make the motion, as I said earlier, uh, as is customary, that the affected residents be made participants of the site plan agreement and as well that we implement a restrictive covenant, uh, that it be site specific to Williams Pub for the drive-through.
You have Counsel Carrio, he actually has the floor. Is that, is that what you want to say? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, discussion of the motion. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Hey, Your Worship, I'd like to add one more thing to the motion and I don't mind the, uh, the changing of the zoning, Your Worship, but I think that Mr. Allen had asked that, uh, that planning staff actually look at, including the parking stuffs that were on the hydro lands, uh, so that they could eliminate those other two parking spots, uh, for landscaping and behind Mr. DeCarlo's property and I'd like to make that part of the motion. If the mover and secondary, what is it?
Okay. Part of the motion then. Any other comments with respect to the motion? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good time.
Members of council, the next item on the agenda is a report with regard to a letter of request for support of Creek Stock. Um, we have the applicant here, Mr. Dioman. Would you like to come forward, please? Welcome. Would you, for the record, just state your name and your residence address, please?
Uh, sorry, my name is Dean Dioman.
And your residence address?
Uh, 3829 Black Creek Road, 48.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, um, this year we're, we're hoping, um, have high hopes of hosting, uh, an event called Creek Stock. It's, um, it's located on Chippewa Creek of Niagara Falls. Uh, that's the well-known name, the, the political name is the Welland River. Um, it's a, it's a wakeboarding event which, for those of you that don't know, um, it's a water, um, it's like a water skiing, um, event on the water. Last year it was, um, it was, it was conducted, um, there was some things that were missed, but it was a new, a new thing that went on and, and that's the reason why some things were missed. I, I tried my best to, to do it the right way and ask certain people of, of, um, where to get the right permissions from, but it was a hard thing to do because I, I don't think something like this has ever happened before where somebody's, you know, wanted to hold a, a water competition, um, in the area. So basically, uh, where we're at this, this year is, is seeking, um, a letter of approval from the city of Niagara Falls, which has been mandated by Transport Canada who, um, makes the, the laws of the water.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, the, the area that, that we're proposing to have the event is, uh, considered a no-wake zone and that was, I think, put into effect back some years ago by the city of Niagara Falls for, for boating traffic in the area. The reason why we want the event to be in that area is because it's, it's, it's created a tremendous, uh, you know, economical impact for the, the village of Chippewa, which it, you know, I can say because I'm a business owner in the area, has struggled for years. Bringing these events to the area just promote tremendous, um, economics and it's a reason why, why we needed to go forth, uh, this year.
Okay. Has anything else you'd like to say? You have some questions, I think, from members of council?
Yeah, questions.
Okay. Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo and Counsel Carrio.
Hey, Your Worship, I don't have any, uh, questions, actually. I think that any event that would, uh, promote people coming to the city would be great. I'd like to make a motion, uh, council, do provide a letter of support, uh, for the Creek Stock for 2007 and also that Counsel Diodati is our entry.
Well, we do, uh, Counsel Peter Angelo, we do have, uh, some recommendations here. You may be aware that the additional correspondence, uh, that the clerk has received, if you don't mind, I'd just like to have that clarified. Uh, Mr. Clerk, you had correspondence from the Niagara Regional Police?
Uh, through Your Worship, uh, that correspondence from the police is really more of a matter between the, uh, police and, uh, Mr. Dioman, the organizer, as far as, uh, the possibility of provision of, uh, police support on the day of the event. Um, what that issue surrounds is the fact that on the waterway, to stop a, uh, boat, you have to be a, uh, police officer, basically, and a police officer that has certain credentials and qualifications. Last year when the event went, uh, went through, the, uh, organizers did have sort of volunteer staff that were, uh, charred, that were in charge of, uh, making sure that there was no boats flowing through while the competition was going on and it went well. Um, however, legally, they don't have the authority to stop anybody on the waterway. So ideally, uh, you should have police there. Uh, obviously, that becomes a bit of an issue as far as manpower. The police marine unit is a small unit and basically covers all the way from Lake Ontario to Lake Erie with the Niagara River in between. Um, like a lot of events, the police do offer, uh, paid duty, which obviously is, uh, officers that are on their day off and get paid, uh, to come in to help, uh, for these volunteer events and the price that was, um, indicated to Mr. Dioman was, uh, $2,600, which, um, may or may not be within his budget for the event. Um, the concern with regard to this aspect is the fact that what would happen if a boat or a seadoo was to come to where the competition's taking place and wants to go through? Obviously, the organizers would politely ask, could you please wait till this, uh, run has taken place, but they can't legally force that person to stop. If the voter said, uh, the heck with it, I'm going through, they would have to, uh, stop their, uh, their competition, so. Uh, so there is some jurisdictional issues there and some concerns. Um, unless that $2,600, I guess, is paid to the police, they will, uh, only respond on a complaint basis or on a, uh, emergency basis. Obviously, we hope that it wouldn't come to that. Um, there are liability and insurance issues that council should be aware of. This isn't just necessarily as simple as providing a letter of support to, for the event to waive the, uh, speed, uh, limit that's, uh, currently on the Welland River there. There's other aspects to it as well. Um, obviously, the, uh, letter of support that would go to Transport Canada would be in essence saying that we are, uh, the council is willing to waive the speed limit on that day, but council also, also has to always be mindful of security and safety of any events of this magnitude.
I have Counsel Carrio, Counsel Ainoni, Counsel Fisher, Counsel Thompson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to Mr. Dioman. Have you talked about the insurance? Can you get the insurance policies, Steve?
Yes, the insurance is something we're gonna look at closer. Um, again, for those of you that are unaware, I'm a business owner in Chippewa that sort of caters to this exact market. Um, the, the people, um, that are involved in, uh, sort of putting on the wakeboarding aspect of it is a, is a group that tours through Ontario and, um, we've contacted them to, to, you know, put it in Chippewa to say for that weekend. So they have insurance, um, for their, their respective body of boats and, and individuals, uh, that are, you know, amongst the competition. And, uh, last year, our, our own business had to take out insurance in regards to, uh, road closures, park permits, that kind of thing. Going forward, we're, we're gonna, uh, hopefully marriage the two together and, you know, get an exact, um, you know, look exactly to see in regards to the insurance of who's covering what and that kind of thing.
Thank you, Steve. Um, Your Worship, I've been talking to other business owners in the area. They're very supportive of this event. Uh, they've asked, um, what are you shaking your head? No, you've talked to someone that's not supportive of the event. There are many businesses in the area that are supportive on the event and this reminds me a bit of, of, uh, the things that go on along the Upper River Parkway. I've lived on the Parkway for many, many years and there's an event about once a month, every other month on the Upper River Parkway when they close the Parkway and the residents cannot drive on the Parkway unless it's an emergency, unless you have to get to your home. And we accept that and live with that. It might be a little bit inconvenient, but sometimes we have to bend so that others can enjoy their businesses, their properties as well. So I certainly am gonna support this and hopefully everybody will be a little patient with them on that day and let them have an opportunity to make some money. I know it's a, it's a tough sell sometime in Chippewa to make things go and they don't have a whole lot of events that they come to us for help and I think we should help them. It's very easy to say, you know, to put roadblocks in front of them and say, we won't do this, we won't do that. I think if you wanna do this, we'd get behind them and say, let's do this, let's help them, let's, like, get behind Chippewa and see that and help them make some money.
Thank you, Counsel Carrio. I have, uh, Counsel Ainoni, Counsel Fisher, Counsel Thompson and Counsel Rainey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That sounds great. I'd like to win some speech, but bottom line is, where's the responsibility lie? I have a problem with, and, and, you know, we all want to see Chippewa do better business, do more business. Um, the letter to you from Transportation Canada says that, um, you need, you have to have the following letters of request and approval from the municipal police force. I'm not supporting any motion if you don't have that approval. Do you have it?
We're in, uh, we're, we're in negotiation stages, as Dean, uh, stated. We're at the point right now where I think, uh, the Niagara Regional Police, you know, they're, they're coming up with a number of $2,600 to be there to make this event safe in their, in their jurisdiction. Um, the Transport Canada, uh, has waived the fact to have a written letter from the Niagara Regional Police. That's not saying that he, as an event coordinator, still wanna go forward and put this event on without them, you know, supporting the event. Uh, they understand that the Niagara Regional Police only has two boats to cover two Great Lakes, lakes and all the rivers in between, um, only a few trained staff that can be on the boats and we're asking them for help. Um, many, many meetings, um, going up to today's date, the message from the police was just that, we don't have the manpower, we don't have the amount of trained staff, our territory is too large to help you out on that day. So it is just, you know, come amongst in our last meeting that, yes, your event would be much safer if police were involved, this is how much it's gonna cost you. So that's where we are right now and we will try to seek funding, uh, to have the police involved that day.
Did we get the letter from Transport Canada waiving the letter from the police department?
Question, do.
We do have it? I'm sorry, through you, the clerk, do we, because we don't have a copy of that.
No, you're, you're right. I don't have that in writing yet. I will get that, but like I said, it, it's, it's, it's my goal also to make this event safer with the police. So, you know, that's the avenue I'm gonna take. I want the police to be involved. If it's gonna come at the, the part of $2,600, well, maybe the whole event won't be able to go forward, but-
I'm confused. You said you do have a letter or you don't have a letter?
No, I stated I don't have a written letter.
I'm sorry, through you, through the chair.
All eyes debate.
Do you or don't you?
No, I don't have a written letter at this point. We've had verbal communication and like I, like what I stated was that I wanna work with the police, so I'm not gonna go back and ask them for a written letter stating the police aren't necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Aydani. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, while we all wanna encourage business in Chippewa, I don't wanna encourage an event where we've been told in this council chamber for safety and insurance reasons that we could be liable and, you know, when he says, um, we are going to look at who's insured, that doesn't tell me that the liability doesn't rest with us. I'm a little dis- I'm concerned that, um, nothing presented to us is tight. Um, I would rather see that we know for a fact that you are covered 100% in insurance and the liability doesn't fall back on this council and some sort of communication from Transportation Canada and/or the NRP that says, um, we are willing to either waive the fee and participate or Transportation Canada telling you they're willing to waive the NRP being there.
Okay, so you can incorporate that into a, into a motion if you wish, so we can ensure that that's the intent of council? You can, you can-
Well, maybe through you, our, our solicitor, if we don't have those things, who does the liability end up with and who, who's assuming the risk if somebody gets hurt when we've been red flagged? Because to me, this, this application screams red flags, you know, make sure that you have your T's crossed and your I's dotted when you're putting people out there.
Mr. Rainey, can you address that, please?
Yes, sir. Answering the counsel's question through you, Mr. Mayor, um, there certainly is reason to be concerned here that the city might attract liability as being the only, um, authority at which they could trace back any actual, what could be termed approval of the event. Um, the safeguards that were proposed by the Parkinson's Report would deal with, uh, those issues and if those requisites that are listed on page three of the report are put in place, this would assure that the city would be, uh, would have the necessary resources to fall back on, uh, should, um, untoward event take place, uh, during the course of the, uh, event.
Good. Those are contained on page three of the report, so they can incorporate easily into a motion. I have Counsel Fisher next.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, we've had quite a conversation on the phone and, uh, you have, we know of the problems of last year. Uh, the authority papers that were needed and didn't happen, but I can honestly tell you, we have never seen that many people in the village of Chippewa at one time. You could hardly move in that village, it was so wonderful. Everyone received that so well and they're looking forward to this year. So I know that you have promised me yourself that you would make sure everything is done that you could possibly do. And I have spoke to several of the business people who are on side with you, so I'm sure when it comes to dollars and cents, they're going to come forward also to give you a helping hand. Uh, as far as the police, uh, I'm not sure about their boat, but you do have the fire department, I'm sure. You did last year. Am I right?
Counsel Fisher? I just, uh, yeah, the chief wants to make a comment or the CAO? Clarification?
Your Worship, uh, we've had numerous discussions, uh, with Steve and, uh, with different staff and again, the regional police have their, uh, their concerns, the reason primarily being that, uh, you have to be a policing agency in order to stop traffic.
That's right.
So if, uh, and, and Steve has really been pushing to try and have, uh, the fire boats there to do that because they have more authority to be able to be sitting on the water, people who listen to them more, pay and respect and understand this, this concerns. But from our perspective, um, as a municipality, I have some serious concerns about accepting the liability for our personnel who are not, uh, who do not have the authority to actually stop traffic on the water to be doing such. If there's an accident and there's liability involved, uh, that will definitely come back towards, uh, the city, I'm sure. So what we are proposing that we will do in support of the event is we would in, in any community event, um, we are, 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 uh, planning a, uh, training activity on the water, not directly involved with where they are, further down, uh, the river, so that we are at least on the water in, uh, for the majority of the event if possible, unless they're called off to another call, uh, so that we can be, uh, in close proximity should an emergency occur. And that is not the same as being part of the event where we are actually considering safety boats for the event.
Yes, and I understand that completely, that you are not going to use authority, but you are there for the safety reasons. The same with St. John's ambulance, uh, their boat, they will be there, I'm sure. Am I rightly, yes?
I'm, I'm not sure if the, uh, St. John's will be there. I imagine they would be.
They, they are, they are. But in the whole village, uh, you will have, uh, the police for traffic? You will have as much as we, you are asked to do? That's wonderful. Have you seen our report and the things that we are asking you for if we agree to this?
No, I, I haven't seen the report, but, uh, basically that's what we're after. We're, we would like a letter of approval stating your concerns. If a liability is a concern, state that in the letter. Give us something to go back with to say, okay, now let's, let's, you know, let's get the insurance, let's, let's, uh, talk to the, the police, let's go from there.
Thank you, Sharon. The clerk walks, make a comment, Mr. Clerk.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Dioman, did give a copy of the report after our last meeting.
Did you have this report?
Well, let's get Counsel Fisher up. You can supply that to him, but we can approve-
You know, I, I haven't seen the report, but, uh, basically, that's what we're after. We're, we would like a letter of approval stating your concerns. If a liability is a concern, state that in the letter. Give us something to go back with to say, "Okay, now let's, let's, you know, let's get the insurance, let's, let's, uh, talk to the, the police, let's go from there."
Thank you, Chairman. The clerk wants to make a comment, Mr. Clerk.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Deelman did give a copy of the report after our last meeting.
Did you have this report?
Let's get Councilor Fisher up. You can supply that to him, but we can approve this matter or, or disapprove it. If it's approved with conditions, it would be, as recommended by our council, with the conditions contained in the report.
Well, I can tell you, last year I had a lot of concerns when I found out you had not permits for this and not permits to that. But because I've discussed it with you and because I've discussed it with many others, business people, and they're all supporting you, and you have promised me that you will do everything that is required of you, then I'm going to support you.
Chair Thompson.
Sir?
Well, let's, yes.
Did he or did he not get the, the report in front of us?
Yeah, we had a meeting last Wednesday, and I handed the report to everybody at the table. Mr. Deelman was at the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Counselor, Councilor Thompson.
Through the chair, um, thank you. Um, you know, we have still several months to go before we, uh, get close to the event on July 7th. Um, Alderman Fisher, or Counselor Fisher indicated that she hadn't seen that many people around. Um, maybe I'm a little older than she is, but, uh, I go back to the Chippewa days that were held annually, and I tell you, that was, uh, without exception, not only Chippewa, it was one of the most exciting events that were, uh, in this community. And, uh, the number of people that were on the banks in Chippewa and on the Whiteman Bridge and wherever were phenomenal with, uh, swimming races, uh, short and long term, uh, the greasy pole, uh, the, the let ducks, uh, out, and everybody would run to chase them on the water, uh, swimming, uh, to get to your ducks. I tell you, it was a phenomenal community event, and it looks like you're starting up, uh, uh, something very special again. And congratulate you as a, as an entrepreneur who's trying to do the right thing. Uh, I think we should be working wholeheartedly as a council to not only do whatever we can to make this happen and support you, uh, but certainly give you a letter of endorsement to make this happen. Uh, I think this is phenomenal, and, uh, I bet you if you had it a couple or three times during the summer months, you'd be just as successful, because people are looking for this kind of excitement and entertainment, and it certainly is. And, uh, I tell you, all you have to do is to go back, sort of say that 50 years, and you find out what they used to do before, and it was incredible. So good luck, and you have my support.
Do you have a comment?
Uh, okay, fine.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, to Councilor Thompson, thank you very much for saying you're much older than I am.
Councilor Meeks.
Uh, Your Worship, it appears insurance is a major component of this discussion, and I think I have to declare complication.
So noted, thank you. Councilor Meeks.
Uh, I am very concerned about the liability in this. So we're talking in a, an event being planned for about eight weeks from, from now. The statement, uh, the insurance of something we're gonna look closer doesn't reassure me, because we have a letter here from Transport Canada dated January 22nd saying, from our last conversation, December, you mentioned that the letters of approval from the municipality and the police force were imminent. So, you know, if this business is saying to Transport Canada in December that letters of approval are imminent, getting the insurance in place for something eight weeks from now worries me. Um, I see the clerk has a comment?
Yes, he does. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, through the chair, I, I don't think, um, Mr. Deelman should be criticized for the date of that correspondence versus when this is coming. We have had a number of meetings with him. Uh, he has been very patient. Um, as my report outlines, there is a bit of a chicken and egg thing here, where I know Mr. Deelman doesn't want to, uh, invest any more time and money if he's not gonna get that letter of support, although our suggestion is, well, you sort of have to do both hand in hand, uh, especially with the timeframe that's involved. So I don't want the impression to be that he's been sort of sitting and not doing anything, because we have had a number of meetings to date to try to get a comfort level from all of the sort of approving agencies, all the, uh, you know, enforcement agencies, uh, that are involved. Uh, we had a meeting as recently as last Wednesday, where, uh, we had the MPC, Ontario Power Generation, Fire, Police, Parks Police. So, uh, there have been a number of meetings that have taken place. Um, I would say that we're not quite comfortable from a, from a planning, uh, stage yet, although, uh, Mr. Deelman did come forward with a plan at the last meeting, which seems to be a good start as far as, um, you know, answering some of the, uh, issues that we may have and some of the contingencies.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Also, the council, I might just say that if you do have a concern, the recommendation, uh, as I said earlier, would include the provisions, and that would be, uh, the responsibility of Mr. Deelman to, to meet the requirements. Whether it's a timeframe that's too short or not is clearly a concern that he'd have to address, but if we incorporate, if there's a support around this table to incorporate approval, uh, subject to the recommendations of our staff, which are contained on page three, your concerns would be addressed.
Okay, now, um, seems to me the police, what about our report that says the police are concerned that an event like Creek Stock only encourages speeding along the river? Uh, they're put in an uncomfortable situation when they're being asked to ignore the law on the river, and they won't condone or support the event. Uh, you know, I, supposedly, the Transport Canada has now said we don't, they don't need the letter of approval from the police. Uh, we don't have that in writing. I certainly don't have it in my package.
No, uh, once again, I just remind you that a provision that we could include in the approval process, it would be contained in the recommendations that you have before you. So all the requirements that are contained, uh, on page three in the report would have to be incorporated before Mr. Deelman would be given approval. So your concerns would be addressed. I can't address your police matter. If you'd like to address that, have that directed to somebody on staff? Is there a question you'd like to ask of staff with regard to that?
Uh, yeah, I guess some comments on that would be...
From who?
Mr. Clerk.
[laughing].
Just I've been the most involved. Um, you know, that's the police's opinion. I mean, there's a counter argument that would say on the day of the event, the Welland River isn't safer, because there's so many people around. So, I mean, that is the police's opinion, and the analogy I would use would be, if there was a drag race on a city street, uh, would that encourage drag racing on that city street when the event doesn't take place? Perhaps. I mean, it's very speculative. So I wouldn't maybe, uh, I don't think that's really the deciding factor, although the police obviously do have concerns about speeding on the Welland River, but that takes place during the rest of the year, and I think on that one day of the event, there's probably less speeding than during the rest of the time.
Okay. One more question to you, Your Worship. Um, go first, I guess both to, to Dean. Uh, the first one is, uh, to the best of your knowledge, has Transport Canada rescinded the requirement that a letter of approval from the municipal police force?
Mr. Fisher?
Through the chair, uh, I'm only going on what Mr. Deelman has said verbally to us during meetings, that he knew that it was very unlikely that the police would give a letter of support, so he called Transport Canada, and my understanding from what he's said to me is that, and in the meetings, is that Transport Canada said, "Well, get the letter of approval from, uh, the city at least, and we'll see where we go from there." I haven't personally followed up with Transport Canada. I will tell you, last year the event went on, Transport Canada was aware of the event last year. In fact, all of these sort of authorities were aware, although very late in the game, and I think we're a lot further ahead this year than we were last year, where the event sort of happened and all the, uh, various agencies were sort of looking at each other, like, "Did you approve this? Did you approve this or not approve this?" So I think we're, uh, we're a lot further ahead this year as far as some organization taking place. And, uh, I mean, ultimately, it will be up to, uh, Transport Canada whether they, I believe they have to issue a permit for the event. Uh, whether they will do that or not is really up to them.
Okay, my final question is, uh, in your earlier comments, Dean, you mentioned something about the Niagara Parks Commission being at the table. Could you expand on that? I'm trying to get a handle on the level of their involvement and whether I...
Well, actually, and I mean, I, I sort of empathize with Mr. Deelman in the fact that, uh, taking on this sort of, uh, event at that location, there's just so many, uh, approval authorities or at least agencies that have an interest that you don't think of. For example, uh, you know, part of the property along the water is actually owned by OPG, Ontario Power Generation, so they have an interest. Uh, the property from, uh, the Whiteman Bridge to the, uh, the mouth that goes out to the river, that's Niagara Parks Commission property.
Is that involved in this matter?
Uh, yes.
Okay, then I'll have to get a clarification.
Thank you. Now, members of council, we've had sufficient discussion. Any other comments? We've called, yes.
I'm gonna make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
That the city supply a letter of support contingent on approvals from police? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I didn't...
Yes, can we have that?
Nobody seconded it.
Uh, actually, yes, he did. He did. There was no seconded.
There was no seconded.
Council Peter Angelo, yes, please.
Then I'll second his motion.
Yes, let's just have it clarified. You did make a motion. Can you recall?
I have it right here. I made a motion that, uh, that council provide a letter in support of the Creek Stock 2007.
Yep.
That's the motion that I made.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it with an amendment.
Okay, well, now you want to make an amendment.
I'll second it with an amendment, that it be conditional upon support of police, fire, OPG, and MPC. I find it amazing that we have our, well, you would, it would, it would occur to me that if you have on camera your fire chief telling your council that he has serious concerns about liability, then this council should be appeasing our fire chief and not Mr. Deeman. See, I wrote it as he spoke. I, I can hear, I'm sorry, through the chair, our, our fire chief just said that.
Yes, we understand.
Um, if, if he's telling us that and something happens, and I would assume the liability would come back to us, because we were pre-warned by our newly appointed fire chief. So I just want to make sure before we send this letter out, that we've covered all our safety issues, and I don't think Mr. Deeman wants to host it or hold it if you're not getting approvals from the governing bodies that tell you you can or cannot host it, I would assume.
So you're proposing a friendly amendment to the motion, then?
Yes.
As the mover and seconded, did they approve that?
Yes.
No, the mover does? Does not? Seconded does? Or does not?
I thought that was part of the motion, that we're not gonna let somebody in and do something.
Was it possible?
Yeah, I, I thought that we were going to, uh, put those conditions in, as in the report.
Well, that's, uh, the mover is, are you prepared to move that, uh, motion? No? Well, that, that's, then of course, Councilor Thompson is not seconding the motion of Council Peter Angelo. So Councilor Peter Angelo, you were making a motion to approve the matter, point blank, that's it. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I wrote as a condition.
Well, is there a second to that motion?
Yeah.
There is not, so the motion fails. Does somebody have a motion?
I'll make the motion with those conditions.
Okay, please stand.
I can.
Okay, you make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the same motion Alderman Peter, uh, Council Peter Angelo made, with the conditions of approval for police, fire, OPG, and MPC. I mean, if we're gonna pre...
We're having a simple, sorry. We respect this, the recommendation here.
And that he have full insurance, and that has to be provided before we can provide a letter of approval. It's, I mean, he's told us he's going to do that.
Okay, we have a mover and, uh...
So that's basically what we're doing, just as in approving, uh, staff's recommendations.
Yes, that's my, my comment. You, you talk about page three, recommendations. Are you moving those recommendations? Okay, is there a second to that motion? Mr. Clerk, do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, uh, through the chair, I mean, the conditions that I outlined in number three, or page three, there's three bullets. Uh, the first bullet, I wasn't suggesting that the police, fire, OPG, and MPC would all sign off. If you're saying that should be a condition, uh, that's a little bit more than what I was, uh, suggesting. I understand why you would make that, uh, suggestion, but, you know, there is some, uh, possibility that the police may never sign off on this, and then, you know, but that may be where you're going with that.
Yes.
To that point, this is getting, we're confusing a really simplified issue. We want the city to be covered for liability, we want to make sure the governing bodies approve. And, and Mr. Clerk, you did just tell us that when you had a meeting with those agencies and you highlighted it, one looked at the other and said, "Did you, did they have a permit from you? Did they have approval from you?" We're just trying to follow what, what staff is saying. So rather than, rather than confuse the issue, we want liability to be covered. We don't want it to come back on us, and I think most important above liability is the safety of Mr. Deeman's participants. If he's not going to go by the approvals, Transportation, if Transportation Canada tells him he can't host it, he can't host it. But at least the city has covered itself, and we've made sure that the participants are safe. I, I don't know what else we can do.
Okay, councilor, you've made that motion. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion? Motion fails. Okay, Councilor Carrion.
I'd like to make a motion that, that council provide a letter of support to this organization if he complies with the insurance portion of the three bullets, just the insurance portion. If, if we're insured, our liability is covered. If he supplies insurance...
Thank you, Councilor Carrion.
I would make the suggestion that you have to go with the third bullet. We're not expecting that he will have applied for all the permits. We will, we will have sent the letter out. I have it, I have an authority, and he's told me he will apply for all permits, this is just making sure he does so. Uh, we wouldn't hold up the letter of support, like, for example, he's gotta get a, uh, road closure permit. We're sure that'll take place, we know he'll do that, so we wouldn't wait for that, for the, for the, uh, letter to go to Transport Canada. We, we realize that he has some time constraints as well.
Councilor Carrion, do you want to qualify then?
Yes.
Two and three? Okay, seconded by Councilor Thompson. Everybody else to speak for this? Okay. Councilor Anoni.
So we don't, you, you're telling us he does not need approval from police and fire? Wow, this is awesome.
Okay, let's qualify this. So Mr. Clerk, uh, point, uh, bullet point number one, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, Councilor Anoni made a good point about, you know, the event last year and everybody sort of, uh, saying, "Hey, did you give approval?" The, the interesting thing, though, is that even in all of our meetings, the police have said they won't send a letter opposing the event. So you have to sort of get that distinction in your head. They will not stop the event if it takes place, regardless if they give a letter of support or not. They say, you know, say they decide they're not gonna give a letter of support, which seems likely, they're also not gonna stop the event, and they will respond if there's an emergency at the day of the event. So you have to bear that in mind. It's not so much that they, uh, you know, all the agencies aren't sort of looking to each other to stop the event, they're sort of looking to some other agency to, I guess, approve the event.
Well, that would be us.
Mr. Deelman?
Yeah, so just to clarify, the Niagara Regional Police are in a tough position here, because what I am asking them to do, or at one point was, is to approve something, a speed limit that I want to break. That's the problem here. And just to clarify, uh, when we run these types of competition, we're, um, we're never exceeding speeds of 17 to 18 miles per hour with the speed limit on the creek, I believe of possibly six to nine, I'm not exactly sure. But, you know, let's not get in our heads that we're going 30, 40, 50 miles per hour, or Transport Canada would never even think of this being a possibility. The Niagara Regional Police have stated in many of our meetings that they cannot submit meetings that they cannot submit a letter of approval just on that principle. It's not what they do. They don't write, write letters on approval of, of breaking a speed limit. If Transport Canada wants to lift that for the day, then that's their business. And as Dean stated, they will not be there to interfere unless they're called upon for , uh, emergency, uh, response.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor there, members of council, that includes bullet points number two and three, moved by Counselor Carrion, seconded by Counselor Thompson. I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five? Opposed? One. And two abstentions, declarations of conflict. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members of council, I have a few comments, uh, this evening. I'd like to acknowledge, as you are aware, the passing of Mr. Stan Price, who was the city manager for Niagara Falls for a ten-year period from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen eighty-one. He started working for the city in nineteen fifty-three as an assistant engineer, and it was with great sadness that, uh, we learned of Stan's recent passing. He certainly left a legacy in municipal government in our city as a soft spoken and a hardworking gentleman. On a positive note, uh, we had the opportunity to attend Niagara Days sponsored by the Regional Council and, uh, and Net Court, uh, in April, on April twenty-third, twenty-fourth in Toronto last week. It was very much of a success. We had an opportunity to discuss with various members of, um, of cabinet and members of the provincial government, along with members of the opposition, different issues that did pertain to the region with respect to our city. Our, our request was to the extension of Casino Niagara, uh, looking to extend the lease. And, uh, we've got good, uh, good response, and we hope that we have, uh, some positive response from the government in the next, uh, few or several weeks. Also, employee recognition, then, on April twenty-sixth, it was a pleasure to spend some time with the, uh, City of Niagara Falls employees on Thursday evening to honor retirees. Our clerk was the emcee that evening, and, uh, we had an opportunity to, uh, acknowledge the long service employees and recipients of our Employees Excellence Awards. Congratulations once again to all those who, uh, were honored this past week. We appreciate your dedication to service of the people of Niagara Falls. Also, on Thursday, April twenty-sixth, we held, uh, this year's award ceremony for the Misty Awards. It was a wonderful, a wonderful event that acknowledged people in the tourist industry in our city who have made a difference. Congratulations to the award winners. So this year, I would like to make special note of Mr. Tony Zappatelli, uh, the recipient of this year's grand Misty Award. Congratulations. Also, on Saturday, April twenty, twenty-eighth, here at City Hall, on Saturday morning, along with other, other towns and cities in Canada, members of our community gathered at the front steps of City Hall to remember those who have died in workplace accidents. It was also a day to raise awareness of responsibilities and rights of employees for safe working conditions. I'd like to congratulate, if I may, as well, Mr. Clyde Crowthers on his completion of his hike of the entire Bruce Trail. As you know, Mr. Crowthers is a, uh, cancer survivor at this point, and I'm really pleased to congratulate Clyde on his, uh, on his achievement. Upcoming events, on Thursday, May third, you may be aware that, uh, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee is going to have a Battle of the Bands once again. And this energetic night is to be held, uh, at Oxford Park. And, uh, on May third, as I mentioned, it's a wonderful student run event. I hope that you all attend. It highlights the talents of many local young musicians as, uh, their peers cheer them on. And good luck to all of the students participating on a successful event this Thursday evening. Niagara Concerts, the last concert for the year, will be held on May fourth. I'd like to acknowledge the final Niagara Concert performance, uh, for this season. Congratulations on a very successful concert season. We look forward to their continued shows in the upcoming year. Also, on, on, on Saturday, May fifth, the Stanford Lions Club will be celebrating their fiftieth anniversary. I'd like to congratulate the Stanford Lions for their fifty years of service to our community and to thank them for the good work they do in the city of Niagara Falls. I'd like to also acknowledge, if I may, Counselor, uh, Dia Dadi, for his efforts in, uh, in, in actually working as the emcee and organizer of the, uh, fiftieth anniversary of Ann Meyer Secondary School. I think it was a well-attended event held on Saturday. A lot of very, uh, strong compliments to the organization, to both yourself, and, uh, and I believe it was Ms. Campbell, Mrs. Campbell, who assisted you. So it was a great event. Thank you once again. Stanford High School will be celebrating the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary reunion on the twelfth, Saturday the twelfth of May. And to present, uh, past and present students, uh, I'd like to, uh, and staff, I'd like to wish you well. I'm sure this will be a very enjoyable week for all involved. I look forward to, again, sharing some time, uh, with the celebrations. I know that Counselor Carrion was involved, I think, as a graduate, and, uh, I believe a sponsor, is that correct? An attendee. The best, the best six years of your life. Also, schools in bloom kickoff. On May ninth, the Department of City Committee will kick off its student event, the Schools in Bloom, on Wednesday, May ninth, at St. Paul High School. Once again, it gives me great pleasure to wish the schools competing good luck in this year's event. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Counselor Maves. Oh, yes. Is that admission of-
For the years.
Yes, for the best years of your high school life, is that fair? That's good. Congratulations. Uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, we have communications and comments. Anything further in addition to what we have here?
Uh, there is a further communication in the faculty, but I suggest we deal with the, uh, five pro forma issues, I don't know if you have any additional.
Okay, members of council, the first, uh, request is the request to proclaim the month of May as Museum Month from the Border Museums, moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Aiononi. Uh, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. The second request is the active living, share your experience, request to proclaim June as Seniors Month, moved by Counselor Aiononi, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Third is, live it up every day, a request to proclaim June as Recreation Parks Month for the approval of council, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried, thank you. Fourth request is by Out Niagara, request to raise the rainbow flag above the City of Niagara Falls for the month of June, moved by Counselor Aiononi, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried, thank you. Uh, fifth request is from Gyro Club of St. Catherine's, request to proclaim June fourth to June tenth as Gyro International Week, and a request, uh, of flag raising at that same period, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Dia Dadi. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried. And, Mr. Clerk?
Just an additional correspondence that came down from your office, your worship, and that is from the, uh, City of Welland, and what it's, uh, asking that the, uh, major municipalities, Welland, Niagara Falls, St. Catherine's, and actually Fort Erie, that the mayor's, CAOs and appropriate transit individuals get together to discuss, uh, inter-municipal transit. So, uh, we thought we'd bring this forward just to expedite that and facilitate the meetings as soon as possible.
Motion by Counselor Wing.
Motion of support.
Seconded, uh, you seconded, Counselor Thompson?
Uh, yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, seconded.
However, I would like to also, uh, include, uh, that the Niagara region be included in this post-discussion.
Yes, they're, they're there, there.
Sure.
Any further discussion on that motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. Um, at this point, we don't have ratification of corporate services, but we can deal with community services. Do we? Can do that? Okay, so ratification of community services first, let's do that, we'll call on Counselor Aiononi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following items to be ratified, the September eightth meeting of the Community Services Committee. The meetings of April sixteenth, two thousand and seven were approved. Um, reports, report BBS two thousand and seven dash zero six be deferred for two weeks to allow staff to pull the residents affected by the final illumination. That the, B, that the parking restrictions be implemented on Mechanic Street, as in the report MW two thousand and seven dash twenty-three, and that the restrictions from the east side of Keller Street be implemented from eight AM to two PM. That a residential convenience pass for on-street two-hour parking at parking meters be referred back to staff for further information. That city, D, that city council reaffirm the use of the Drainage Act to secure access and resolve drainage issues in the city's rural area. And further, that a public main be held with the landowners, landowners. Three, under new business, A, that staff prepare a report on the Condominium Act, and B, that staff prepare a report on the correspondence in regards to George Street Peter Park. Nice little move.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Aiononi, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Motion's carried. And we do have ratification of Corporate Services Committee actions from the meeting of April twenty-third. We'll call on Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thank you, worship. From, uh, last Monday's meeting, there are six items to be ratified. First, at the minutes of the March nineteenth meeting, be adopted as recorded. Second, that the following two thousand and seven funding request be referred to final budget deliberation. Uh, the Child Advocacy, the Child Advocacy Center of Niagara, the Border Museum, the Niagara Military Museum, Women's Place of South Niagara, TNGH Foundation, and the Niagara Falls Public Library. Third item, your worship, that the funding requests from Niagara Falls Tourism and Winter Festival Lights be referred to final budget deliberation. And further, that the city assist both agencies by placing a banner at, on the city's website. Fourth item, that the correspondence from the United Way of Niagara Falls be received for information. Fifth item, that the request for an ornamental fence between fifty, sixty-seven Victoria Avenue and the Armory property be referred to staff. And further, that addition of quotes be obtained and that consideration be given to an aluminum ornamental fence as compared to the more costly cast iron. Last item, your worship, that the department, that the departmental presentations on the two thousand and seven budget be received for information, and I would so much like to.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Dia Dadi. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried. Next on the agenda, members of council, is the consent agenda. Is there anything within the consent agenda you'd like to have lifted? Counselor Peter Angelo? A little sec, does anybody have anything they would wish to flip? Counselor Thompson?
Um, yeah, I just, uh, would like to, uh, compliment whoever did the report on the animal services. Uh, I think, uh, we're finally on the right track. Uh, Mr. Bandau seems to be, uh, the appropriate person to, uh, be involved, and I look forward to, uh, a report that is going to, uh, give the opportunity for us to make a, uh, a decision on a very complex matter that has been troublesome for some time. Uh, I wonder if anybody has a, um, a cost of, uh, his services, is that probably the hour?
Mr. Clerk?
Um, yeah, an upset limit of, I believe, uh, twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Good, now, is there anybody who wishes to have something left? Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment because I think the public would like to hear that, uh, the major receivable quarter in the report, uh, as of now, we have forty-nine percent compared to fifty percent last year, uh, that percentage collected. And in arrears, we are equal to last year so far, so we're holding our own. And I think the public are very happy with that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move the consent agenda. Counselor, uh, Counselor Aiononi, Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion further? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or considerations this evening?
No additional bylaws.
So at this point, I'd like to have a motion to reduce the bylaws, by law, if you give them a first reading.
Second.
Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Aiononi. Um, and you've heard the motion, any discussion, any comments? Yes. Counselor Wing?
I'd just like my opposition to bylaws two thousand and seven dash eighty-six regarding closing Grassy Brook Road and two thousand and seven dash ninety-one regarding the, uh, dump expansion to be noted.
I'm sorry, which one? Two thousand-
Two thousand and seven dash eight-six, uh, closing Grassy Brook Road and two thousand and seven ninety-one, uh, allowing the dump to expand.
Thank you. And Counselor Aiononi?
Thank you. I voted opposed to both those issues also, so I'm opposed to those two in the bylaw.
So noted. Okay. Yes, I'm sorry, Counselor Dia Dadi.
I voted against that second one as well.
Which, uh, nine-one?
Nine-one.
Okay, at this point, then, members of council, uh, we've heard the motion, uh, all those in favor? One, two, three, uh, here, one, two, motions, yes, say, and accept, okay? Say and accept those, those declines.
Bylaws two thousand and seven dash eighty-five to two thousand and seven dash ninety-four are the first time.
Now, a motion to the bylaws, the second, third reading, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Aiononi. Uh, you've heard the motion, any further questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Bylaws two thousand and seven dash eighty-five to two thousand and seven dash ninety-four are the second, we go to term in power.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll call for new business. Counselor Wing, Counselor Dia Dadi.
I have two matters, which, uh, actually are related to one another. Uh, the first one is, actually rises out of, um, the cottage rental matter that we looked at at our last meeting. And I had a call a few days ago about a bed and breakfast operation, which has been an operation, um, how, for I guess about six years, non-licensed. And, uh, it was recently sold, um, it was advertised as, as a B and B, uh, three bedrooms with the potential for a fourth. And I'm told that it could never get a license because there's not adequate parking. But, but, you know, it just sort of opened up the floodgates for, uh, a lot of concerns about unlicensed B and Bs. Um, I told the gentleman who contacted me that I would bring the matter forward tonight. And, uh, soon after, I got an email from the Niagara Falls Bed and Breakfast Association, um, and I guess I will forward this to Mr. McDonald to, uh, deal with, um, with the appropriate staff. But, uh, there, there's a lot of problems with unlicensed B and B operations, uh, operating in our city. I mean, if they're not being inspected, we don't know if they're complying with fire codes and building codes and all that sort of thing. So I think it's very important that they're all inspected, they're all property licensed. So I'd like to, uh, refer this to staff, uh, to investigate and report back on this one property in particular, uh, which I will tell Mr. McDonald about, and any others. Uh, so that would be my first motion.
Right, and second? Sorry, your second motion? You, you making a motion?
You want to, yeah, that's a motion.
Okay, is there a second to the motion then? Counselor Carrion, any discussion in the motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
And the second one, uh, I was actually going to just approach staff about it, but since I'm dealing with B and Bs, um, I had a call from a totally different gentleman who, um, it's about B and Bs establishing in the historic Drummondville or Main and Ferry area. And I know as the rep on the Main and Ferry BIA that that body is very supportive of B and Bs establishing in the area because it really dovetails nicely with what they're trying to do. Uh, the gentleman who approached me has a request that the CIP provisions relieving, partially relieving, uh, B and Bs in the CIP area of development charges be extended beyond the CIP boundary. That there's, there's the BIA boundary and the CIP boundary is much wider. And there's B and Bs establishing just outside of that CIP boundary in the adjacent neighborhoods. And this is good for the area as, as a whole. And what he's wondering is, can we either extend the boundary or just extend the provisions of the CIP to B and B operations in that immediate neighborhood?
Perhaps.
So gain that, uh, you know, something for staff to please look at and report back to us on, and we'll make that motion.
Okay, do you want Mr. Hillis to qualify that before he make that motion?
I'm sorry?
Do you want Mr. Hillis to qualify that?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Hillis, can we extend the boundary with regard to the CIP?
I would have to look into that, but, uh, I believe you just amended the, uh, development charges by law to address that matter, and, uh, I'm not sure how those boundaries correspond, so I'll have to look into it.
So if you come back with a report, then we do have a mover by Counselor Wing, a seconded by Counselor Maves. Any discussion? All those in favor? The motion is carried, thank you. Uh, Counselor Dia Dadi?
Uh, thank you, worship. The first, uh, item, just to echo your comments with regard to the fiftieth reunion at Ann Meyer, I want to send out an official thank you to all of the volunteers, uh, the organizing committee who worked very, very hard, uh, put in thousands of volunteer hours over the last year to make the event, uh, the success that it was. And thank you to yourself and, um, Alderman Peter Angelo, our Counselor Peter Angelo and our, and Rob Nicholson for being there that evening to help us, uh, celebrate the event. Uh, it was, it was an extremely successful group. Already received dozens of emails from all over, uh, thanking, uh, the group for doing, uh, what they did. Uh, the downside is, we're gonna have to repaint the gym floors because of all the scuffs and scratches from all the walkers and canes who have the alumni playing basketball. Uh, the upside of that is, as we mentioned earlier, is the fact that, uh, we never had to use any of the extra defibrillators that we brought in, uh, nor any of the oxygen. It was immediately dispatched to the Queen's Tavern, and it wasn't needed there either. So it was uneventful in that regard, but extremely successful. Um, now, all the volunteers that worked so hard to put this together ventured, uh, volunteer protection plan. They've assumed new identities, uh, they've relocated, and they've asked that their numbers be lost. So, uh, we won't go looking to them to help out with the sixtieth. And we wish, uh, a lot of success to the Stanford one-fiftieth. I know they were, uh, hanging around, uh, the event, picking up ideas and tips and whatnot, and, uh, good luck. Yes, yes, we are lending them the oxygen and the defibrillator, so good luck. Uh, and my other motion, or my other order of business, uh, your worship, is in regard to our local casinos. Um, I received another call today, um, from, uh, someone who has just recently, uh, let go, uh, from the casino. And, uh, it's, it's an alarming trend, and I just want to touch on this, and I'm gonna make a motion, your worship. Um, and I know you've been working as well, um, you know, behind the scenes to, to help us, uh, put us in a good situation, but I need to touch base on a couple things. My concern is the new direction that the casino seems to be taking. Uh, their actions are affecting our community, uh, and in a negative way. There's a push for profitability, but at the cost of the community. Um, they've initialized a trend of withdrawing from community involvement. They're divesting themselves, uh, from local tourism initiatives. And they're veering away from their original objective of stimulating the local economy in a number of ways. The situation I just alluded to earlier is the fact that many employees have been let go recently, longtime employees of, of more than ten years, with no explanation, just, uh, the explanation that there's restructuring. They're being replaced with contract workers without benefits that are on-call contract workers, it's demoralizing. It was explained to me that typically you're called in for a meeting, unaware, uh, you're told that your services will no longer be required for no reason other than restructuring. You hand in your badge. If you have any questions, you hold those and you call the one-eight-hundred number and ask your questions. Then you're escorted out of the business, out of the building, most of the time without an opportunity to even apply for a lesser paying job. It's putting people, it's hurting families, it's putting people in a tough situ- situation. As well, as we know, there's the threat, the ongoing threat, uh, of closing Casino Niagara, which unfortunately, uh, is well-known in the community. And I know, as I mentioned earlier, your worship, I know you're working to try to alleviate that threat. However, in the meantime, there are a lot of very concerned, nervous, scared employees. They don't want to say anything because they don't want to be the next person that's gonna lose their job. As a matter of fact, some employees have taken demotions to lower themselves down on the totem pole, so they won't be the next on the chopping block. That's extremely unfortunate. Seems that the casino is starting to become something of a black hole for this area. They're certainly going in the wrong direction. And they're setting us up for failure by rehiring employees, by replacing these jobs with contract employees. They're gonna set us up for failure, and they're gonna put us into a situation that we don't want to be in. And I'm gonna make the motion, your worship, that yourself, our CAO, our MPP, Kim Crater and the Minister Kaplan, meet with Art Frank, the new head of the casino, to discuss the symbiotic relationship that is required for a healthy relationship between the casino and this community.
I could just qualify, if I may. I did have this discussion with Minister Kaplan. He informed me that, um, he was going to be meeting, uh, with the new acting, uh, CAO of the OLG, and also that he would be coming down to meet with, uh, uh, Mr. Frank. He hasn't had that opportunity to do that yet, and he said he would, he hoped to be doing that in the next couple of weeks. We do have a meeting set up with Mr. Frank this week, and, uh, we have met with our CAO and our Director of Business Development in the past, uh, and we have a request, a specific request of Mr. Frank. Uh, we can certainly carry your concerns if you wish. Uh, we have, uh, reminded the minister that, uh, we'd like to see the casino get back to the basics, uh, being an economic generator, not just solely involved in just making a profit and focused on making a profit. Because initially, as you recall, the province promoted the idea that the casinos would be an economic generator. Since that time, members of council, many things have changed in the gaming business, and the, the issue before us is one that, uh, Mr. Frank, I guess, is trying to rationalize the business. It is unfortunately with peril, unfortunately to some of the employees, and I've had discussions with those people, and we've expressed that, and I'd be glad to carry that again. Uh, our MPP and I have had that very discussion as well. Um, we had the chance to discuss that in the last couple of weeks. And, uh, our CAO in Business Development Department is well aware of the, of the situation. So if you wish to amend that motion to direct us to, uh, make the pitch directly to Mr. Frank, I'd be glad to do that. I have had the opportunity to, to complete one part by expressing the concerns to Minister Kaplan. Uh, we hope that he will come down soon, uh, because we're asking for his consideration. And, uh, he, he said that, uh, he hopes to have that done in the next upcoming weeks.
We worship, and I appreciate where you're coming from. Uh, however, my concern is when you don't have all the people in the same room- However, my concern is when you don't have all the people in the same room, you've got a lot of he said, she said, and I'm not comfortable, and as well, I think it's, this is something that require, it's an urgency issue, and the seriousness of it, I think, requires the fact that we need all the decision-makers in the same room. I've heard too much he said, she said over the last four years, and I think get everybody in the same room, lock the door, and don't open it until you can hammer out a deal. And I can appreciate, and I understand the casino figures with the new management, you know, they've taken the approach that they had up in Casino Rama, which unfortunately is very different, and I've been up there, it's a great place, but it's nothing like Niagara. I mean, look around. You can't, you can't compare what's going on up there with what's coming here, and I would let the, I would want the motion to stand, Your Worship, that we would vote on it. I'm glad you're going to be meeting this week. I'd like to see that motion, that meeting take place again, and we can bring the minister down here as well.
If I can qualify that, and we can make a request to the minister, so I'd be glad to do that, that we can hopefully be in attendance with him at that meeting, so I'd be glad to do that. Is that your, are your request?
Well, sure, we can only request that if you're there.
We can't demand it.
But the fact that it's an election year, there's a good chance he'll come down, I would think.
Sure, yes, and he said he was coming. So that's the motion you make, seconded by Counselor Iannone. Any discussion further? Counselor Thompson?
That's, Your Worship, I'm wondering, what specifically is the motion?
That we get together, the motion would be, you got it, Donald, sir clerk?
That the mayor, CAO, MPP, and Minister Kaplan meet with Mr. Frank to outline the importance of the symbiotic relationship between the casino and the local community.
Beautiful. My compliment to Counselor Diadati.
We call a vote, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you very much. Any other new business? This time, okay, members?
Yes, I thank you for the report with respect to the council review meetings. There's a list there for members of council, didn't see that on the different dates. I would hope, and I think I suggested in my comments previously, that maybe the clerk or his or her designate could talk to the members of council to fill up that list, to see who is available at whatever times to make sure everybody has an opportunity to experience that.
Thank you. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, and to Counselor Thompson's point, I've asked to attend the May sixteenth state staff meeting in regards to an issue that's being dealt with there that's coming forward to council. So I did call Mr. McDonald and ask him to pencil me, and just so I have the approval of council, we're dealing with the Boys and Girls Club report, consultant report that's coming back, and that's something that this council put me on that committee, so I've asked to attend that one, and I will report back to council.
All right, okay, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, on that same matter, I appreciate it, I hope members of council would, would call in and, and participate.